Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee. Thank you. Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Our first item on the agenda is to call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here, thank you. Now, item number two, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir. There are none this week.
Okay. Councilmember Brennan?
Make a motion to approve the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two agenda. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, a second by Councilwoman Contreras. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Moving ahead to consent agenda, business on consent. Mr. Reynolds, any changes?
No, sir.
Very well. Councilor Whiting?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent business as presented.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Again.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. Any other discussion? Before we vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for sixteen August of two thousand twenty-two. Four A one approves the city council meeting minutes for three August of two thousand twenty-two. Four A two adopts resolution R. two thousand twenty-two tac zero, excuse me, tac one zero seven, approving the amendment of the Shakopee Fire Department Relief Association bylaws, including a pension benefit increase. Four B one adopts ordinance number O. two thousand twenty-two tac zero two three, amending section fifty-one point zero one and fifty-one point zero four of the Shakopee City Code by setting fees for flexible dumpster violations to be established in the city fee schedule. Four C one adopts resolution R. two thousand twenty-two tac one one zero, accepting work on the Ridge Creek Park and P. L. O. C. improvements project and authorizing final payment. Four C two adopts resolution R. two thousand twenty-two tac one zero nine, accepting work on the Seventh Avenue West and Sixth Avenue East Alley Project and authorizing final payment. Four C three approves a professional services agreement with SRF for design services for the Eagle Creek Boulevard and Veerling Drive Roundabout Projects. Project. And four C four approves a professional services agreement with SRF for design services for the C. S. A. H. one oh one and Shenandoah Drive Traffic Signal and Improvements Project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. I do have a motion and a second for the consent agenda as stated. It has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Consent agenda has been approved. Moving ahead to item number five is now I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and make a comment on an item not on the agenda. Welcome. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record on an item not on the agenda tonight. Welcome. Please speak directly into the microphone.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you please speak up?
Pull it closer to you. Just pull the works closer to you. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
There you go.
Okay, welcome. My name is Jacob Henin. I am a new resident to Shakopee. I just moved into one of the new apartments downtown Shakopee. And I did email you all about two weeks ago about the train horn and the quiet zone that Union Pacific can do. And I did read from Councilmember Brennan sent me the article from two thousand fifteen that had the estimates for doing all of downtown. But tonight, I am just asking to consider doing the first to look into the first two intersections that are closest to the factory, which would be Scott Street and Apgar Street. Apgar has three tracks that go over the intersection and from nine P. M., ten P. M., midnight, and even three A. M., there is at least twelve horns as they, because what they do is they honk three times and they go over the intersection, then they change tracks and go honk three times and go back over. So my plea is that we can at least do something with those first two. It'd get a start. I know the city has a lot of intersections and ideally, I think the cheapest and safest way would be to block off Apgar and then put another set of downbars on Scott Street. Because I feel like for Union Pacific too, it's safer for their workers to not worry about traffic as much if that three-track intersection is just blocked off. And so, but I obviously don't know as much as some of the Union Pacific people would know, but I feel like that is a good start to look into that. And yeah, I live in one of the new apartment buildings and there's already people saying they don't want to renew next year lease because like the midnight and the three A. M. horns are just too, they're too loud and disturbing and I can't even keep my window open for the cool fall breeze because it sounds like there's an air horn right outside my window. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention again.
Thank you very much. We do have a railroad committee that meets from time to time with the railroad and the last time we met, we didn't engage in this topic. But Councilwoman Whiting?
Thank you. As a person that might live, you might live a block closer, but I live on third. It's, you'll get used to it, I will say, but I'm not going to tell you that. We've had a lot of discussion, as you mentioned, you got some, as I recall, but I'll defer to our railroad committee, that the discussion was we close them all. Are we, we change all the intersections at, what was it, a million some apiece? And we close a couple. And I think a couple you mentioned, one of them, and I know we'd have a lawsuit. So there's some of those discussions at hand, but it's a major project and it's probably sitting closer to eighteen to twenty million at this point in time or much more. But I'll defer to someone that knows a little more, Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I am on the railroad committee for the city council along with staff members, have been for quite some time. And there really is quite a bit more to it than just closing an intersection. When you, when you start looking at the totality of the city, the, and the loudness of the horn and how far it travels and how it bounces off the buildings and stuff like that, to really make an impact, you'd have to either do all or nothing. Because you're still going to have the whistle right next to your building at that crossing. Wanted to make an impact, you'd close them two and stop the whistle there. And them are probably your hardest two to close. It gets down into the detail of having a four quadrant crossing arms, including the pedestrian crossings, goes into fencing between blocks, between crossings, which we really don't want to divide our community. We see it as kind of an entrapment issue. They see it as a safety issue, so we disagree on that. Plus, it looks terrible and it's added cost. But deeper, when you look into it, even closing, I'll give you an example. If we close Spencer Street, well, what does that do to the traffic pattern downtown? You really only have Spencer, Marshall Road as your main crossings because if you look at Minnesota, it goes up to Fifth Avenue, doesn't go all the way up to Tenth. So there, you get into a traffic study and what it does to your total traffic patterns and how does that impact the broader community. Been through this many times with a lot of different people. It's a tough issue, absolutely. And it takes partners to do this. And hate to say it, but at this time, we're the only partner there that's willing to even consider some of these items. So it's going to take a lot of work on some other players' behalfs to have an impact on this. And Mr. Reynolds could probably answer that. He's been on the study with me the last five or six years, but prior to that, the past city administrator had the same concerns.
Yeah.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. One of the, first of all, we are continuing to try to find grants to assist with this project. And we've been doing that now for about six years at least. We can't do it on our own, but if we do get a grant, that's just the first step. And much like Councilwoman Lehman said, there's a lot of study that would have to go into traffic patterns as well as determining if any of the particular, if any of the particular crossings needed to be closed. And of course, if we start closing crossings, we're going to have people that are upset because we're closing crossings. So if we do get some, and Steve, you can probably give us a little better idea of what's actually out there in regards to grants. Steve and I had had some communication back and forth on this a couple of weeks ago. But that's just the first step. And we're talking multi-million dollars in order to even begin the process. Steve, can you give some?
Mayor and councilmembers, there are grants out there. There are competitive grants, but they would require a cost share from the city. So my recommendation is really until we solidify the cost share from the city, that we should not pursue those grants because it is a substantial investment on the city's end. I mean, it's, you know, the past estimates that were indicated are just over five million, but they've, they've increased significantly. So that would be a, an item that we need to further discuss before we pursue those grants at this point.
Mayor.
Follow-up, Councilwoman Lehman?
You know, one thing that has bothered me for many years on the railroad issue is the sheer loudness of the horn. If you or I or any other person had a stereo system in your car anywhere near that, you'd get a ticket. Okay? So it, it almost seems like exempt from any kind of noise standards. They claim they're not, but I can't believe that that horn is within the legal limit when it's much louder than some of the exhaust we hear and some of the boom boxes in cars and stuff like this. So I've, I've tried to push that issue and you probably know this better than anybody being so close. One engineer just seems to have it too way up and just lays on it and the next one's really nice about it. So I don't know if it's, you know, their personal position on the topic and one is trying to make it more miserable than it needs to be and the next guy's or gal's got a little bit more compassion.
Friday night guy.
You know? And it seems to me that the railroad could do a much better job being community friendly, not just here, but everywhere that they operate. Shakopee is unique. We're one of the two in the country that has a railroad on Shakopee platted land, which is very, very rare in the country. Which makes it a little more difficult, I suppose, for the railroad and the F. R. A. and some of the things that they do. So very complicated issue.
Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Good evening, welcome.
Hello. My name is Jeff Cleveland. I'm from North Iowa, but I've been living in Shakopee the last ten years. And I have to warn you, I am deaf, but I read lips really well. So unfortunately, by law, we can't interact one-on-one. I, I'm the only one that can do all the talking. And it's not a position that I relish or look forward to. I'm not a very good speaker, so I hope you can understand what I'm saying. The last ten years, I've been taking care of my mother because she had back surgery. They did it wrong. They had to do it again. And the area where we reside is just north of the new shopping centers. That's not, I'm not talking about the old Shakopee Town Square. I'm talking about like where Walmart, Soup Stand Club and all that is. That's where we're sixteen and eighteen. There is no sidewalks there. And the problem that I'm trying to bring forward is people will solicitate. And I remember reading the paper, since I've been up here for ten years, I'm literally a resident. They said that they have to register with the city before they can solicitate. And I put signs on the driveway. I put signs on the door. But people, it's amazing. Some people just have no common sense and you never know with the way the world is now, what people are up to if they're trying to con people. By the way, I should mention some of my, one of my mom's neighbors was a well-known resident. He was a silent partner of Von Hansen Meats. So I think some of you are probably aware of who I'm talking about. He was a silent partner. I don't really want to bring his name up. He was a good man, one of my mom's neighbors. And, but anyway, all my mom's neighbors, they have the same problem. They're tired of people coming. And the last ten years, I've been filing police reports, showing them the ads. You know, they all have to have, if they want to be in the mailbox, they have to have the business class, which is the retail. It's like two cents in bulk. And we've contacted a couple of them. In fact, I texted with one individual and he said, I'm trying to make a living. But I texted back and said, well, you know, driving all over creation and breaking the law by opening up mailboxes because only federal workers can open up mailboxes and the homeowner. This individual was just kept saying, no, it's all right. I've been doing it for years. And he would say, I'm trying to make a living. I said, you're driving all over creation, wasting gas. I texted him and I told him, just get a business class assortment and bulk is dirt cheap. You save money. If you say you're trying to make a living, this is the better way to make a living. This guy has done it twice in the last two years, putting stuff in the mailbox. There's no postage, no nothing. And that's all these, but one, I would just circled one, you know, for an example. And I went to the city hall last week. I don't know if any of you are giving a heads up. I talked with three people, the secretary that was at the desk. One man was the, the street department. And they all looked up my mom's address and, and they knew, and the guy knew where I lived, even, you know, like when I gave him the address, he knew where I lived. So he said, yeah, that's an area that had a lot of garbage being dumped too because it's wooded area and people just go out in the middle of the night and dump all kinds of stuff. It's amazing. Mattresses, tires, old barbecues. And one time, we got lucky, we opened up the garbage and there was, you know, as a matter of fact, I'm talking about mail here. Well, there are mail within their garbage. So we reported who it was and they got in trouble and dealt with. But the problem is I keep getting all these people that come to our door or they put stuff in the mailbox. And we've had mail stolen. I, unfortunately, I've lived in Iowa all my life and never had a problem, but I've had my identity stolen twice in ten years. And I'm going to tell you, it took three years the first time to clear it all up. It's no fun. I don't wish it on my worst enemy. And it just seems like no good deed goes unpunished. And I'm trying to be a good person up here. I'm staying out of trouble. I'm keeping my nose clean. I help all my neighbors. I shovel their driveways. And then I come across these individuals that have no brain health, unfortunately. So I was tired of reporting it to the postmaster. I'm tired of reporting police reports because they keep telling me they contacted these people, but how come they keep doing it? I would think if the postmaster contacted me and threatened me saying, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine if you caught nothing with mail or if you're, you know, convicted of stealing mail. It's up to a quarter of a million or if it's lower than ten thousand, which is still expensive. I would be scared to death, but these people aren't scared. So I came up with the creative idea while I was talking to the people in the city hall last week. I told them I was going to go to the courthouse and I was going to file a restraining order on every single one of them. But I was very disappointed within five minutes because they said it's going to cost two hundred and ninety-nine dollars to file restraining order on every individual pe- person. And this is just a sample. I had a file with me. So I'm not about to go and blow three thousand dollars to put it on people that are committing crimes against me because first of all, they're trespassing and second of all, they're committing a federal crime. I mean, you can't get more criminal than that. That's what I thought. And here I learned something new and it's terrible. And I feel terrible for people who have to, who have to, who are victims and they come across things that are weakening against them when it comes to justice. And it's a really, really embarrassing when you have to go, when you're a victim and you have to file three hundred dollars for restraining order for each person. It's two hundred and ninety-nine, but let's just call it three hundred. It's easier. And I walked out of there. I feel pretty defeated. The only thing I wanted to do would be heard today, just to let the problem be out there now. I'm, I don't know if any of you are even surprised or if you heard of this, but if you're surprised, I'm glad because some people need to get a little bit of a shock factor because this is irritating. And I've had to live with it for ten years. And I'm sorry that we couldn't have a dialogue back and forth. I mean, we could, but legally, it's against the law and I don't want you to break the law. I would have to have an interpreter here in order, because the problem, it comes to this. If you ask me a question and I got one word wrong, like if or or, so I'm just trying to save you, you know, so.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
At least you're aware of the problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would any other resident like to come forward and make a comment on an item not on the agenda tonight? On an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, then, we would move forward to item number six, a business room for consent. There was none. Item number seven A, public hearing for a vacation easement. Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Contreras. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is now open and Michael will present.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the vacation of public and drainage and utility easements within Behringer's First Edition. This is the site outlined in blue here. This is the former site of the Scott County Workforce Center. These are the existing easements that will be vacating around the perimeter. There are drainage and utility easements. And then as part of the Canterbury Amphitheater Edition, there'll be new easements recorded later in this meeting. So staff recommends vacating these easements as the developer intends to construct the Canterbury Amphitheater on this property and the reconfiguration of these lots were under the existing easements, not desirable. New easements will be provided with the planning of the Canterbury Amp Edition as shown on the previous slide.
All right. Questions of staff? Councilwoman Lehman?
How do I get this exhibit up there?
Yeah, go back two slides. That one. Nope.
Forward one? There you go.
Yes.
Where the two lots on the bottom come together? Is there going to be no easement between the two parcels or will they be combined?
Mayor and council, there's an item later on your agenda that basically creates a new parcel for the amphitheater.
Right.
Okay, so we're only going to deal with the, with north and?
East.
East?
So.
Sides now and then later we will deal with the south and south side.
Mayor and council, there are no easements on some of these other parcels. They were out parcels. This was a vacant lot that never was developed. This actually had a building on it, so it had recorded easements.
Okay.
But this slide is showing the new easements we're going to get, right?
Right.
Correct.
That, we're vacating the whole roundabout or the whole square right now during this item.
Mayor and council, that's correct.
Okay. Then we'll come back. Okay, I got it.
Yep.
Um, great. More? Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you. Does the applicant have, want to come forward and make a comment?
Mayor, we're the applicants.
We're the applicant.
We own that parcel.
Oh, wow. All right.
I'll come, I want me, oh, no.
Um, okay. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and make comment on this request for a vacation? This is a public hearing. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none? Councilwoman Brennan?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Brennan, a second by Councilwoman Contreras to close a public hearing. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passed. Public hearing is now closed. Councilwoman Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt resolution R. two thousand twenty-two tac one oh five regarding the vacation of a public drainage and utility easements as decided within, as dedicated within Lot Two Block One, Behringer's First Edition.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Whiting, a second by Councilwoman Brennan. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to item A one, which is our financial, a monthly financial review for July two thousand twenty-two. Nate, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. As you mentioned, the financial report for July, I'm pulling up here just in a second. Keep it brief, since I've got a lot of numbers we'll be discussing later with the budget work session. But this slide shows the general fund through July. So typically, we'd expect about fifty-eight percent of our revenues and expenditures. Total revenues are tracking ahead for the year. Taxes will remain relatively flat until we receive our second half tax settlement at the start of December. And then the majority of intergovernmental revenue is also coming in the fall. We're continuing to see a lot of billing activity. Billing permit revenue was tracking significantly ahead of our budget targets and ahead of last year. Licenses and permits are, have already exceeded the full year by about a million dollars. Expenditures in total are within the budget target today at fifty-five percent. Finance is currently exceeding the target percentage. This is primarily the result of the timing of our audit and our assessment contracts, which are paid at the first half of the year. And then the billing inspection department is also exceeding the target percentage, primary result of credit card fees related to the revenues and then the annual software costs.
Questions? Okay, continue.
And then moving on to the recreational facility budget actual. For Sand Venture, total for June and July for revenues, we're at about ninety-seven percent of the budget annual revenue. Ice Arena is slightly below where we were last year. And then for the community senate, we're up some from last year, but a little bit below what we expect in terms of a budget at this point in time. So see if there's any questions.
Nate, I have a question on if I want to make sure that I'm reading the deferred revenue that posts every month, right?
It is. So it would be our annual memberships that we allot over the.
And then comparing that against twenty-one to twenty-two, that's almost a double of revenues that are coming in the door that are deferred, correct?
That is correct. So it would be, you know, in regards to your annual memberships.
Strong membership. Thank you. Other questions? If not, continue.
Um, that is it unless there's any further questions you might have.
Other questions of our monthly review? If not, thank you very much, Nate. All right. Let's move ahead then to eight A-two, which is a moratorium on the sale of THC products and authorization for publication entitled by summary. Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, I wanted to start with just reminding everybody a little bit about this. Uh, we saw this last, uh, meeting and essentially what we're asking the council to do is to provide the opportunity to have a pause, um, when it comes to the sale of, uh, these particular THC substances. So staff and the state can kinda get a grip on exactly what we need to do in several different areas, including zoning, licensing, compliance checks, and although we, we're not sure about this, uh, manufacturing as well. Um, I would like to note really quickly that, uh, we did receive some email correspondence on this, uh, right after the last council meeting, which I forwarded to all council and it's part of the public record as well. Um, so that has been made a part of the record. Uh, specifically what this is, this is not a ban. Uh, we do not have the ability to not have these substances here. Uh, so essentially at some point, once we figure out licensing, zoning, uh, and the other areas that I covered, uh, you know, ultimately this will move forward. The, the timeline for the, the, uh, uh, moratorium itself is for a year, but it's up to a year. Frankly, the administrators and the county of, of all the cities in the county and the county administrator met yesterday, uh, morning on this issue is one of the topics. We are going to be putting together a work group of all the county, uh, administrators, uh, led by the administrator from Prior Lake and the administrator from Savage, uh, to try to put something together that works for all of our communities. And, uh, the county is also moving forward with the moratorium. Uh, the county attorney has, uh, made an opinion that, uh, he believes a mor- moratorium is necessary to allow, uh, all the communities to once again put things in place to move this forward. The reason we're in this, uh, circumstances is because Minnesota did something that no other community or no other state in the nation has done up to this point. Normally, when you look at THC products, whether that be recreational marijuana or, or marijuana or any other type of THC product, uh, the state essentially, uh, makes it happen, puts it under the purview of a particular, uh, arm of the state government, which then, uh, spends a lot of time putting rules together. Uh, those rules are then promulgated and then after the rules are promul- promulgated, uh, you then have that passed down to the counties and the cities, so they can then implement that. In this particular case, there are no rules. This is literally the wild, wild west when it comes to this substance. Uh, we could sell it right here in City Hall. We could sell it in schools. We could sell it anywhere. Uh, uh, it can be, it can be manufactured in homes. It can be sold from homes. There are no rules that were promulgated along with this and that's, that's really the issue and that's what we've gotta get our head around. And, um, it's not just this city, it's all cities in, in the state. Uh, the vast majority of them are putting moratoriums in place. We do know that the state is in the process of taking a look at what they're going to do in the future to try to handle some of these licensing issues. Uh, that is occurring and will be occurring as soon as the legislature comes back to, uh, uh, its, its role. So at this point, we very much would like the ability to have a moratorium, which is simply a pause to allow us the opportunity to study this, to allow the state the opportunity to figure out what they're going to do in the future. Because frankly, one of the worst things we can do and what, and the epitome of bad government is for us to enact something and then we have to change it later and then you, you've basically put a lot of people in a position where if they've made some investments and then the state comes in and says, "Well, we're not gonna allow this." Or, "We're not gonna allow you to do it here," or, "We're not gonna allow the substance of this type." Um, then that really, really affects people in the pocketbook. So we need some clarity. We need some clarity at the local level. We need some clarity at the state level and that's essentially what we're asking for is a pause to allow us the opportunity to get that clarity.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much for that overview and, uh, Councilor Whiting.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, you, I know you've mentioned a couple of times tongue in cheek about selling in, uh, THC at City Hall.
Well, it's not tongue in cheek. It's actually, we could.
Well, and, and that's the, that's the question. As part of the study, I think it would be great to add, uh, municipal sales. You know, you've heard of municipal liquor stores and you don't do that when you have a bunch of liquor stores already selling liquor. But if you had municipal sales, you would control the hours, you would control where it is sold, you would control every aspect of it. So I'd like to see if we could add that to the research, uh, when we start looking at it, if that's something, um, that can be done.
All right. Others? Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, after the last discussion on this, I started thinking about some of the things that were said. And city government is not in, in a position to validate the content, the ingredients, the, the volume or weights. Uh, that's, that's not our role. We don't do that with any product. So, so I started thinking about, okay, the, the zoning, the, the licensing, the compliance. And the last discussion, apparently the state law says that you can't sell where alcohol is sold specifically. Is that, is that what it said?
No, you can't do it in liquor stores specifically because liquor stores have, only have things that are allowed and they have to be actually named. Now, that may change.
Right.
I, 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 I fully suspect that the state is going to say that we will allow this in liquor stores, but I, I really don't know.
So, so I, I started thinking, okay, what, what would happen if we would allow it in the same zoning, with a, with a same licensing and same compliance check regiment as current tobacco sales? So if you have a current tobacco sales license, with a license, you could add this product. Granted, it'd have to be the certain specs that the state law says. Um, but we wouldn't allow any other locations other than that until we get clarification. Um, and we wouldn't allow freestanding. We wouldn't allow all these other things. You would only be allowed at a current licensed tobacco establishment with a license specifically for this. And then the compliance check would be the same as the alcohol or the, uh, tobacco. Um, and it would have to be, well, the zoning was already, is already there because they have a tobacco license. So where's the flaw in doing that?
Um, that certainly could happen. Um, and, and it would take us some time to put that together. Uh, but that could, and that may be, and, and, and if that's the case, it may be a couple of months that that could occur. Uh, that makes sense. Um, but, but the, the, the problem is, is right now, there are no rules and it takes us some time to be able to put that together. And, and frankly, very much want to ensure that what we're doing is commiserate what the rest of the county cities are doing so we can kinda come together, uh, on this. Because if you think about it, everything at the state level on tobacco and liquor is all the same. It's all the same rules for everybody. And if we don't have the same rules for everybody, at least at the county level, which we can control, then it's gonna be a patchwork quilt of, of rules and regulations. And, uh, from the, from those of us in, that run the cities in the county level, we very much don't want to see that because we don't want one city doing one thing and another city doing another thing and suddenly, uh, one of them is a magnet or one of them is repelling, uh, what is a, a legal business. But what you, but, but what you have outlined makes great sense and, and would be relatively easy to do. Um, but it's gonna, and, and, and we are starting this work group relatively quickly here, so, because we wanna get this moved.
Mayor, and the reason I brought it up is because basically if, if we, if we don't do something simple, the clientele base is gonna go out somewhere else and it's still gonna be an issue. They're just gonna bring it back in their, in, in their pockets to the community. So, you know, you might as well deal with it right up front right away and, and be done with it. And this proposal that I'm proposing, if the state goes back and changes something, first of all, it puts the onus on the retailer to decide if they want to or not, what products they want to accept. They, if they think it's made in a home brew setting and they, they don't wanna accept it, they don't have to. Uh, the onus is on the, on the retailer at that point or the licenser. But if the state does come back and makes changes to it and says, "You have to allow freestanding. You have to allow it in liquor establishments. You have to do this." You have, if they mandate certain things within laws and changes, we just incorporate them mandates right into what we're already doing.
Yeah. Councilor Brennan?
Um, you had indicated that you're gonna be meeting with the other cities in Scott County. Have the other cities already approved the mor- moratorium or in the, in the process of moving, uh, approving it?
Yeah, some have already, uh, moved. Uh, there is one that, um, uh, one of the southern cities who has not approved the moratorium yet. Uh, their counsel very much wants them to move fast on this. And, uh, so he's still gonna be part of the work group, but his, his counsel may have him move faster than what everyone else is going, looking to move.
Um, we're talking about a one-year moratorium. Um, on a moratorium, can you put an ending date on it? Or does it have to be one year from the date of approval? Could we have it as December thirty-first?
Uh, Mr. Thompson, I.
Yes, um, Mayor and Council, you can establish an end date. But keep in mind that, um, um, there, in order to extend that date, it's very difficult to do. So if you hadn't finished your regulations, it's difficult, almost impossible to extend the moratorium for, let's say, the extra five months that you would have if you hadn't do it, done it up to the year. But that said, if the council's anxious to get going on this and wants to put shorter timelines on it, yes, you can have the moratorium have a different end date on it.
I would think it'd be beneficial. I don't know if December is the right date, but I think it would be beneficial to have a date on it, um, in good faith to the community. Um, I can understand, you know, the concerns about not having it in place today and, you know, somebody can come in and set up a business and, but I think a short-term moratorium, um, would move it along quickly. Um, and then, you know, people would know that what's going on and.
Well, I, I very much would like to have the full year simply because we don't know what's going to happen yet at the state level. And, um, we are going to be working on this quickly, uh, from a whole county perspective because it is something that we need to address. And if it's three months, great. If it's six months, great. If it's eight months, okay. Um, but if we get trapped in a position where we don't have the information we need or we don't have a consensus amongst the other cities, uh, you know, that would be my concern.
Okay. Uh, others?
Yep, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think, I guess my question is if the county is working on moving with the moratorium. I don't know who can help me. And we're under the counter, in the county, what does it do for us to have one or not have one if the county is putting one in place?
Yeah, it would only be for unincorporated areas of the county. The cities have the responsibility within their incorporated areas.
Okay. And, um, if I can, I, I agree with, um, Councilor Lehman's idea. Not that, you know, I'm against it in any way. I just would like logistics to, you know, just have them all set out. It's, and I don't know if a timeframe would work or, I don't know. I, I just wanna figure out more.
Okay. Um, I guess, you know, I, I wanna make perfectly sure that there's an understanding that we're not saying no, right? I personally think it's a good idea to, that we take a step back and look at this. It's about who, how, where. I think those are the key points. Um, I think it's working to make sure there's at least some protection for, for the public in an organized fashion, like we talked about a couple of weeks ago about not having it next to schools, right? And things like that or having it in City Hall. Um, so, um, I feel it's important to get this right. Um, I had a discussion over the weekend with a bar owner and it got into the, the talk of a seltzer. And, uh, from talking with that owner, they said that a bar could sell seltzer in it, non-alcoholic. It was a non-alcoholic drink with the, with the, in the seltzer. So it's a, like a soda water with a THC in it. Um, if that were to go forward in the, at a bar, then the conversation said, "Well, I'll take one of them seltzers and then I'll take a, a double, Double Jack Daniels," right, side by side.
Took my drink, right?
Um, and then I, it, it kinda was a little eye-opening for me and I wanted to check. So I wanna just ask the city attorney because I saw an article in, in a, a northern suburb that had a brew hall that was gonna have this offering available. Is it okay to make in a, in a seltzer a non-alcoholic seltzer?
I don't know the answer to that question and that's.
Okay.
Part of the problem is.
All right.
Yeah, the, the law is.
Right.
Just didn't get very well vetted and so there's a lot of these unanswered questions.
Right. And I think that's what I'm finding out that through all this, there just seems to be some, a lot of unknowns and we wanna do it right, uh, especially for our community. I think, I think we owe it to the community to do it right. It's not a ban. Um, it's just about trying to do it right. Um, I know a community that did a six-month moratorium. Um, I don't wanna get, maybe, maybe it sounds real simple and can be done quickly. Um.
Maybe. And, and, you know, once we get the communities together and start peeling the onion on it and, and then, but I really do wanna wait and see what the state is going to do because they are working and I've read some of the things that they're looking to do. Um, and, you know, until we get that certainty from the state itself, you know, that, that's a big part of this.
And we wouldn't even know that in, until they voted on it, until they're in session, which starts in January. Granted, the opportunity for a special session, but I haven't heard any nothing on that as well, right?
Correct.
Okay. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, you're probably not gonna get any state action on this until May, June.
Yeah, exactly.
And, uh, if any action, if they even take action, uh, it's, wouldn't be the first time they left you hanging, right?
Right.
So, you know, I, I tried to come up with a solution that was pretty safe. Uh, um, your seltzer bar example, I'll give you a better one. Somebody comes into a bar and orders a, a beer, pulls out an edible out of their pocket, eats it and drinks the beer. What's the difference?
Same thing, yeah.
Right? One hundred percent legit, legal.
Yeah.
Uh, so you, you, you're not, your moratorium does nothing for that, okay? Um, all it does is makes the people that, the consumer that wants this free market and it's for a legal product to have to go outside of the community for it. It's, it's really all we're doing. So I, that's why I thought I came up with a very simple, safe solution. The zoning, we already know what the zoning is. We already know how to do compliance checks. We do them on tobacco and alcohol sales. And we already license alcohol and tobacco sales. So we've already got everything in place and it's controlled.
Right.
And it really falls on the retailer at that point to make sure of the, the product and the weights that the state requires for a product that the state has legalized.
Okay. Councilor Whiting?
I'm gonna do a rare thing and, uh, agree with Mr. Lehman. Uh, I think we have this down. I hate moratoriums. I, I can't support a moratorium in almost any aspect and, uh, I would support just going to a tobacco license.
Others?
I would, um, recommend putting a December thirty-first, um, end date on the mor- m- establish moratorium with a December thirty-first, um, end date. Um, that will allow, um, staff to go through it and, and, uh, do the work that's necessary to make those changes. Um, and it also safeguards us, um, in the meantime.
Councilor Lehman?
I guess I'm not clear exactly what, what it is we're asking staff to do because if we're not gonna do, if we're not gonna wait till May, June, maybe later, for the state legislators to pass legislation to clarify a bunch of stuff, then we need to be very specific on what we're asking our. then we need to be very specific on what we're asking our staff to put together for us.
When do they go into session, February or?
Well, starting late January, but-
I agree with you.
They're, they're not going to hit it, they're going to have priorities and-
What, what, what we're asking for is simply the moratorium so we can then start working this issue. If you think about it, we've been working the issue on legalized marijuana now for about four years.
Right.
Um, you know, we, we, we've kind of been working that particular issue, but we haven't been working this issue at all.
Uh, it's funny, I think Minnesota, the state of Minnesota's come a long way, right? Um, in the last many years, but then to do it in a manner that they did it and just kind of plop it onto the state and, and all the municipalities and stuff without those type of state guidelines, um, you know, I'm, I think for this situation, I'm in favor of a moratorium. It kind of gets down to the time period. I, I would like a year, but I, I think that, you know, we need some drive here a little bit. Um, if Counselor Brennan, that was a four-month, um, you know, Counselor Lehman, you, you say it makes it sound real easy, but, um, if we do that narrow view of it, um, the way you said, I don't know how fast, um, staff, but I think we should, I think we should have a moratorium. I think part of our discussion is how long? And then maybe we can explore, the direct staff to explore those opportunities. Counselor, or a city attorney?
Mayor, just, just so everybody's clear, what the ordinance says is it remain in effect for one year after its effective date, which would be approximately the end of August twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Um, or until the council repeals it. So you can certainly change that date to say effective until December thirty-first or some other date, but as drafted-
Regardless, we would-
It does allow you to repeal it sooner than the expect-
We would repeal it.
If, so if you don't think staff is working fast enough or, or something along that lines, you can repeal it. But it's completely up to the council as to when you want the, uh, uh, end date to be. We would, I think we would still leave in the language unless you repeal it before then, but-
Right.
If you want to have a speci- specific-
But if we had a ordinance in front of us tonight, the first action would be to repeal the moratorium and then act on the ordinance.
That would be part of it, yes.
And regardless of the length that we, okay, I got it. Counselor Lehman?
If we were going to try to accomplish what I'm proposing, I would have no problem giving staff time to do that. Um, I think it's a safe way to, to move forward. It can always be changed later and we're really limiting where and zoning and, and compliance checks and stuff. And if it takes till December to work that out, I'm, I'm good with that. But a moratorium, I, I don't think is the fix. I, I think a moratorium just puts it on a back burner and relies on the state to, to do something that they might not do or-
Wha- what if, just one, take it one more step further with what Counselor Brennan said. What if there was a moratorium till December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two and then you get away from the state, then it's up to staff to develop the ordinance? We, then we can come back, uh, rescind the moratorium and act on the ordinance.
Yep, that was the direction, that was what I was trying to communicate is put a, a moratorium in for December thirty-first and have staff review the tobacco, um, ordinance to see how it can fit into this. Um, and, I mean, it, it, it just seems like it would be a simple process to go through. We already have it, we already have the backbone in place. Um, and just should be, should be able to fit, fit it into the, um, ordinance.
We certainly can do that. Um, I, I very much would like the opportunity to work with the county and the other administrators in the cities to come to a cohesive agreement for all of us so we don't have essentially a patchwork quilt of ordinances in the, in the community. Uh, but obviously whatever the council wants is what the staff will do.
So I'm getting out of this that it's not about the state. Um, I'm hearing from staff that they want a cohesive effort. There's an idea about having it, uh, a moratorium for four months. I'd, you know, so-
Mr. Mayor, I think the best way to proceed would be somebody to make a motion to adopt either the current ordinance or a different version of it and see where we end up.
Counsel? Counselor Lehman?
So do I make a motion directing staff to come back with, uh, a proposal by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two to allow the state legal products to be sold where tobacco is currently sold in the same zoning, with the same compliance check and with the city license?
If, if I may?
Mr. Reynolds?
If, if council is looking for the tobacco piece, um, that may be the solution, but I don't know that that's the solution at this point. I don't think anybody knows that that's the solution at this point. We can do that, but I very much would like the opportunity to work with the other cities in the county to see if that is a good solution. If, 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 if the council wants us to do that, we can do that and we probably could do that in a three to four-month period. Um, but, you know, again, I, I, I very much would like the opportunity to work with other communities to figure this out.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, the, the, the problem is, is the state isn't going to take it up until May. So if we go with four, four months till December, we're still not going to be able to incorporate any changes that the state comes down with. So what do we do between now and then? Nothing? Do we just say we're going to put a moratorium in place until the state takes further action?
No, no, no. The, the, the staff will be working this issue literally, uh, in the next weeks. We're putting this task force together and we'll be looking at all of the different options that are available. Then I can come to you with a list of options and, and we can actually do the staff work so we don't have unintended consequences. Um, let's just take the tobacco licensing. We actually do not do the tobacco licensing. We facilitate it for the state. So there's a lot of back-room stuff that we would have to figure out on how we would do that here at the city.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, very good. I think what you're hearing from Mr. Reynolds is staff is going to start on this process of adopting-
We already have, we had, we had our first meeting yesterday.
The question before the council is, do you want to adopt a moratorium of any length while that process takes place? So the options of the council is don't adopt the moratorium. Staff will co- continue to work and do their thing. Adopt the moratorium to, when, um, December thirty-first or adopt one, uh, for up to a year. I think, I think that's-
And if there was a moratorium, if that got approved today, what is the start date tomorrow?
It won't, technically doesn't get started until the ordinance is published. So that's probably, how do you, ten days from now, um, ten days from now.
All right. Counselor Lehman?
All right, so I'll move to, uh, impose a moratorium on a sale of cannabis products within a city and authorize studies regarding such products till December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
A second.
Emmet, sorry, just so we're clear. So what the motion is to adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-one, except that section seven, the second sentence says, this ordinance will remain in effect until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, unless it's repealed. It's-
Unless it's repealed earlier.
Right, so the, so your motion is to adopt the ordinance with that change in paragraph seven.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second further discussion.
I have some follow-up questions.
Yep.
Mayor-
Counselor Lehman?
The follow-up question would be, are there administrative folks at the state level? I'm thinking alcohol, tobacco, these types of folks that can take action without legislation? Or do they specifically need, I, I understand some areas are going to need direct legislation, but are there other areas that could be handled administratively at the state? And I don't know the answer to that question.
The pharmaceutical board is the one that has been given the, the power to regulate this at this point, I guess, for lack of a better term. Um, and, and, you know, that's about all we know.
Didn't even know they had one.
And I really, I think by the time the state gets around to tweaking it, if they do at all, I think the, I think the cities will have it all figured out.
I will tell you that representatives and senators under a lot of pressure from cities who were surprised by this and aren't very happy with the way it was handled.
Um, so, uh, Counselor Brennan?
I, I don't know if, um, it would be an amendment or just a direction. Um, could we get a monthly update on it, um, on the work that's going on? And, um, either in the consent business or, or verbally?
Okay. Uh, consensus by counselors, monthly update. Um, I guess I'll, I'll just take a shot. I know it's, uh, onus to extend a moratorium. It's easier to repeal one if we have our draft ordinance ready to go, uh, which is fine. The staff would like a year. I don't think we're, I agree, I don't think we'll get any more answers, uh, you know, until May. But I would like to, uh, offer a friendly amendment to have a six-month moratorium from the date of publish. Uh, maybe that puts it out to the end of February or whatever from the date. Um, it's an extra two months. It allows the working group as well as staff because I think if the working group doesn't work fast enough, the staff has to come back with an, with an ordinance for us. But, um, I would ask a friendly amendment for six months, starting on the, uh, clearance of the, uh, notification date.
Do I just not accept that amendment since I'm the motion maker? Because I, at that point, once, uh, the mor-, once the moratorium expires, if, if we don't have, uh, something to put together or there is something that staff brings forward, certainly doesn't have to be adopted. If we don't like what comes forward, we can just not adopt it.
And then the moratorium ends and then we'd have this discussion all over again.
Yep.
I'll withdraw my motion, or my offer of a friendly amendment. Motion on the table, motion on the table. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Four to one, thank you all very much. All right, let's move ahead then to eight B one, which is, uh, amphitheater P U D preliminary and final plat for Canterbury Amp Edition. And Michael will present, welcome.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, as you said, this is the amphitheater at Canterbury. The, uh, it's being developed by Swervo Developments, an affiliate. Uh, E A W has previously completed and approved and submitted to the U K, E Q B, which also approved it. It's a nineteen-thousand-seat facility with additional parking. Parking will also be allowed at some lots in Canterbury and working on an agreement, uh, to be made with M V K and Southwest Transit for additional bus transportation. The land to be sold to the developer by the Shakopee E D A and Canterbury and Souls Crane. Nine barns will need to be demolished later this year and new roads and infrastructure constructed next year. So this was the preliminary plat, um, talked earlier. This is the former site of the Scott County Workforce Center that actually had, um, easements on it. This will be the new parcel area you'll see in a second. And, um, additional parcels created here and then an outlot and then the inset where the, uh, current barns are. So this is the final plat, the area outlined in yellow. Um, once the developer closes a lot, they'll come back and amend this plat to include that as a parcel into, um, the larger lot for the amphitheater. As you can see here, um, the upper lot here will be the amphitheater lot. There are two lots being plotted tonight. Um, this lot here will be a public parking lot and then there'll be a private road connection through here and the developer, um, Canterbury will still hold this parcel and they can develop this at a later date along with the outlot down in the corner where they have barns. And they are coming forward at the September Planning Commission for a, uh, plan for the demolition of the remainder of these barns down here and construction of new barns and dormitories. So again, this is your final plat. You can see, um, block one is where the amphitheater will go. Um, this block down here will be the parking lot. This will be where there's a private road that will run through here that will be developed. And then again, you have the outlot for future development and then the Canterbury barn lot. This is part of the P U D. There are two items, the final plat tonight and then the P U D for the amphitheater. So this is the amphitheater bowl. Here it shows the seating area. Here's your back of house. The stage is right in the center. Um, some lower bowl seating, upper bowl. This portion you'll see in a second is covered by a, um, fabric cover and then you have the back area. Uh, so this is the lawn here, seating, and then a seating goes down all the way to the stage area in this lower bowl. And they have some special areas for seating on both the left and right of stage. Here's a section through the building. Um, this is almost a, uh, arena, uh, without a standard roof. It's a pretty complex structure. Um, the developers worked with their architects to actually create kind of a lower area that will be protected. So if you're in that lawn area, you'll be able to come down. Also, all the services, uh, food and such will be underneath this kind of protected area. This is a good section here. You can see the, um, canopy going over the seating area, but you can see the back. This is still pretty, uh, large. This is about, I think, sixty feet up. And then this is a section through the back. You can see this is the back of house with the stage looking into the amphitheater. Again, some sections to show you, um, how the roof sits. And again, the lawn's actually not on the, um, grade level. It's way up in the air here, supported by structure. Here's a bit of color to kind of show you, uh, the different areas. So again, lawn is back here through this section. You can see this is kind of the underside of the facility where they have, uh, dining options, restrooms and other support facilities so that if you're here and, um, we had a storm, they actually could go down into this area and be out of the rain. There's a nice rendering, so the facility has, the gates are out here. This is kind of the pre-function space, so you could have, um, pre-concert function out here. This is that large, uh, under area that, uh, will have the restrooms, food service. And then again, this is the actual amphitheater with the seating. So here's the entrance. This is a shot of the actual amphitheater with the, um, cover. Bigger shot, so, um, there's a lot of parking around this facility. It's designed for cars to come in and then flow into these lots. And then here's a good shot. Um, this is Canterbury. You can see this is the actual, um, Canterbury grandstand in this photo. This is the practice track that will get reconfigured long-term as they build the new barns, but the track will remain.
That's basically looking due west.
Yes, this is kind of at sunset.
Yep.
And again, here's the lawn area and these are all the seats down below. So Planning Commission, um, approved this and staff recommend the city council adopt the proposed final plat and the P U D ordinance.
All right. Uh, questions of staff, questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, they showed the parking and stuff, but is there a, a transit piece incorporated in this plan?
Mayor and Council, so the, um, when this road gets constructed here, when these barns get demolished, um, buses will, if you remember from the E A W, come in here and then go into this, um, public parking lot, drop people off and then come back out and they'll stay out of the main traffic flow. They'll actually go down to, um, Veering and- and then onto Eagle Creek and then over to the three lots that M V T A has. And then the city has an easement for transportation with Seagate. Um, Southwest Transit would run buses from Eden Prairie and Shan Hassan. They would stage those buses, buses over in that easement area. So at the end of the night, they'd be available and come up this area here and pick up, um, concert goers and then leave kind of the back way. So they would stay out of the main traffic. This is also designed for the rideshare. So Uber and Lyft would come into this lot and, um, pick up and drop off people and there would be staging in here so that they again stay out of the main traffic flow. If you remember from the E A W is people coming down, kind of Highway eighty-three, coming in here and then also people coming from one oh one going on Barron Shore and coming into this big parking lot here.
So the answer is yes, there's a transit piece.
Yes, sir. Sorry. We, we haven't reached the final agreement with M V T A and Southwest, but they've been very engaged and involved in the process. I think it's a great opportunity. I think they have, uh, M V T A has about fifteen hundred spaces, um, that people would park at. And if you remember, this is a little unusual facility. When you buy your tickets, you also buy your parking. So you'll know what lot you're going to. So you can program it into your Waze or one of your apps to get you to the right parking lot. And if you're going, uh, to ride the bus, that will be one of the options you'll be able to pick out. So you'll be parking in those remote lots and basically be out of the traffic.
Okay. Uh, other questions of staff? I guess, uh, minor traffic related to as well, um, especially the, uh, one oh one in Shenandoah to be able to flow traffic out the back door. I know eighty-three's been upgraded. Uh, Twelfth Avenue will be done by then or has been upgraded as well. Um, the transit piece helps alleviate some of the pressure on there. Um, I was reading in the E A W though, that at, at one point, um, they said it would take over an hour to clear out if some of those traffic management things weren't, uh, weren't part of the situation. So I want to make sure that we have a, uh, make sure a traffic plan that, that is fully engaged to minimize that. And I do know that it's a lot of people and there, it does take time to get in and take time to get out, but all the coordination around it.
So Mayor and Council, one of the conditions before this opens, they'll have to complete an event management plan in cooperation with Canterbury to coordinate both events, but to also coordinate the traffic and work with a parking consultant. Um, there was a parking consultant on board for part of the E A W along with a traffic consultant. We're gonna ask the developer and Canterbury to work together to come up with a plan so that it all works.
Other questions? Counselor Lehman or Counselor Lehman and then?
Do, do we know what the, the attendance was at the twenty-one Canterbury Twin Cities Summer Jam?
Do you?
Um, Mayor and Council members, um, I saw it across my desk on Friday. I saw the number. There was about fourteen thousand entrance.
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
Um, this past year for, for Twin Cities Summer Jam, that's what you're asking.
Like, like. Okay. In, in twenty-one, I attended and leaving was a lot better than I expected. I was, I was gone and out and back home and, and they wouldn't let you go out the back way. So you actually had to go out to eighty-three, down eighty-three. I took Fourth Avenue back into town and I think at fifteen minutes, we were out of there. It was amazing. So.
I mean, I think that, um, the event management plan will help, but also getting people prepaid their parking so they know what lot they're going to is gonna help a lot. I think people parking in those remote lots is gonna help a lot. I mean, think about that. That's fifteen hundred cars parked someplace else other than around here.
It was prepaid in twenty-one Summer Jam.
So I mean, I think the other big thing is they're only gonna have probably ten or twelve events. It'll be at maximum capacity of the forty to sixty events you have here. So that will only occur a dozen times potentially.
Counselor Brennan, I'll come back.
Um, I just have a question regarding the property that the E D A owns and the, is there an estimated closing date for that?
Council, we're working with Kennedy and Graven on a contract for private development that'll come back to you, I believe, in the first meeting in October. They're planning on closing with us. I think October tenth or thereabouts. So you'll approve that and that's the sale of those two properties and we'll advertise that as recorded.
Okay.
Counselor, uh, Whiting?
Thank you. You had spoke about an event management, uh, plan and, uh, the folks, uh, at Swervo or whoever, uh, in Canterbury are gonna work together. Um, I'm, at some of these larger capacity events, uh, there may be some opportunity at this site to get folks to linger and so that they're not all trying to exit at the same time. So maybe we can suggest that. I know we can't plan their events, but, uh, that may be an opportunity to.
I sure, I sure hope the restaurants and bars, hope they linger.
Sure. Yeah, exactly.
Counselor Contreras, any questions?
I don't, I mean, not in regards to traffic. I was just wondering, I don't know, um, the fabric that is being used totally different. Um, would, would you know, um, the, the type of fabric that, that they're using, that covering that they're using?
Mayor and Council, the developers here, they can answer specific kind of questions on fabric.
I, I, my, my question just mainly was, cause I've read that, um, it does something with the lighting. I was just.
Mayor and Council, I think one of the ideas instead of doing a solid roof was so that, if I can get it, you can basically get some light effects particularly at night on the roof. So when there's, uh.
Like to beam back?
And they, and they haven't pushed the concept yet, but for the winter time, other times of the year, they'll be able to light the roof so that it actually can have some light effects on it.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions? Comments to staff? Counselor, uh, Whiting?
You mentioned the roof. I just want to make sure, and I'm sure that all the engineers are gonna, uh, play with this, but, uh, uh, safety concerns on that and all the wind and all of that, uh, that's where the engineers are gonna play, but, uh, I can't let it go without being said that.
No.
We want concerns and snow loads. Yeah. Um, make sure everything's up to snuff there.
Um, no other questions of staff with the applicant and/or their representatives like to come forward?
Do you have any questions?
Do you wanna ask a fabric question? If you could come, please. Fabric question? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, and I guess my question was because of the, the, just the, the concerns of snow, I mean, would that be up during the winter, not up during the winter? How does that work was my question pretty much?
Sure. My name is Erica Freeman. I'm with Shay. We're the architects for the project. We're working with a third-party vendor that basically designs roof structures like this at other amphitheater and airports and all sorts of different facilities across the country. Um, the fabric material itself, um, if you feel it, it's actually very rigid, but it's flexible where they stretch it over the top of a structure like this. So the color of it that we're looking at so far is white. Um, it does have, I believe it's ten percent, um, where it'll let at least ten percent of the light come through. But beyond that, we would also, you know, provide lights and everything underneath it and shine up on it. And yes, of course, it would be, be designed to be strong enough for snow load.
Okay.
Yep. Other questions? Of the applicant and/or their representatives? If not, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Counselor Brennan?
So are we doing two different votes on this tonight?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. One's a resolution that would be first and the second's the ordinance for the P U D.
Okay.
The resolutions for the plat.
Okay. I make a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-two dash one zero three approving the preliminary plat, uh, preliminary and final plat of Canterbury Amp Edition and, oh, and I don't need to say that. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, for approval of the preliminary and final plat. Further discussion, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I have a question. Is the preliminary and final plat contingent on the actual closing of the sale of the, of the city's property?
Mayor and Council, like any project, we won't record this plat until such time that, um, it's gonna happen. So the city and all those people will sign the plat, but we will not record that plat until such time it actually has a closing. They can't move forward now though. We can't rezone the property unless we have a plat in lock.
That's correct. I do have, that was the exact answer I was gonna give you.
All right. Motion on the table in a second. Motion on the table in a second for the preliminary and final plat of the Can- Canterbury Amp Edition. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes for number one. And Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to adopt O twenty twenty-two dash zero twenty creating a, a planned unit development district, number eight Canterbury Amphitheater.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second for adopting the create, creating a planned unit development, number eight for the Canterbury Amphitheater. Um, further discussion? I guess I just wanna say as we move along this approval process, uh, the, the community could not be more excited about this opportunity. I think, uh, as said before, this is the most natural fit for Canterbury, which is a huge entertainment drawn itself. And to have this additional piece is phenomenal. Um, I've talked to my peer group of mayors around the metro. Um, they've, they're very, they're, they think it's really cool, uh, major investment in our community. I think the changes that have been done in the upgrades to the infrastructure for traffic management is critical and we've been doing that. Um, traffic flows today much better than it did twenty-five years ago. Um, so I think that, and I think this is gonna be an important piece to our community. So, um, those are kind of my comments. Counselor Lehman?
I can't help but plug the one sixty-nine corridor coalition need of capacity crossing the river on the one sixty-nine bridge. Just had to get it out there.
Well, thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor, uh, Whiting?
Yeah, I'm just excited too. I wonder what the first, uh, the lineup is gonna be, you know, what's the, can I, can I help pick the first band, you know? Uh, this is gonna be great. So, uh, we're excited to have you come to Shakopee.
Thank you.
Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Big development. And then we're gonna go to nine A, review of the twenty twenty-three preliminary.
B two, A B two.
Oh, I apologize. Let's slow down. Eight B two, Planned Unit Development Amendment to Canterbury Southwest P U D. Michael, welcome back. Sorry to.
Mayor and Council, continuing the Canterbury mode. This is the Southwest Planned Unit Development. Um, as most of you know, this has been getting built out over the past a couple of years. This is the site we're talking about tonight. If you remember, this is where the Amory is, the, um, senior living facility. This is where, um, Badger Hill and Bravies are going. And down at the end of the block, you've got Greystone's headquarters. So this is part of the Canterbury Southwest P U D. Each building site requires a P U D amendment. The proposal is a sixteen thousand square foot building to house a childcare and, uh, facility and outdoor play areas. There's a proposed shared parking agreement with the brewery and restaurant across Winter Circle Drive to allow daycare use of the brewery restaurant parking lot during mornings and early afternoons or for special events at the daycare and use of the daycare parking lot at night and weekends for the brewery and restaurant. So here's the proposed site line, site plan. Here is a Winter Circle Drive. This is Shenyin over here. Um, pretty unusual facility. It has a sport court right in the middle of it. Um, this is a, uh, local firm that's doing this. Um, I think they have three or four other similar facilities. This one will be kind of their latest state of the art. Um, and this was discussed at length at the Planning Commission, but there is toddler rooms down here, infant rooms, and then preschool kind of, uh, on the other side. So they do, I think it was six months, um, to preschool that they carry. Proposed building materials are stone, four colors of different styles of engineered wood siding and decorative metal panels. So kind of similar theme, um, to the project you approved at the brewery and restaurant. Um, this one actually has more of a barn feel to it. Um, I think it's a pretty interesting building, particularly when you look at this elevation. They really broken this up. So again, this is where that sport court is for, uh, when we have rainy days or cold time in the winter, um, they have an indoor play area and they also have extensive outdoor play areas. So Planning Commission, uh, recommend, approve this and staff recommend city council adopt this P U D amendment. I know there was, um, question from council about, uh, traffic on Winter Circle Drive and then coming down to Shenyin with all these different users, uses in here. Um, as part of, uh, tonight you approve the preliminary design work for the, uh, roundabout at Veerling. One of the things they'll be looking at is how far that median comes down and there may be, um, opportunity here to limit some of the turns, but that'll be done through a traffic study as that gets, uh, designed.
Okay. Uh, questions of staff? Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you. Um, now these renderings sometimes all look alike, but, uh, if you go back to the rendering, is this, is this real similar to the, the brewery and, uh, restaurant and color schemes and?
I, I think this has, um, been an interesting, so the Greystone building kind of set the tone. And if you saw the Amory is pretty high-end design as were the brewery and restaurant. This is also, if you look at all the daycares in our community, this is a very high-end design. So they've really done a good job, I think, of kind of keeping that theme and not, um, pushing down on the design, but it's kind of been high design for this area.
No, I like the design. It kind of fits with the, the development. It's kind of rare that you can do that in kind of a sequence where you can kind of keep that feel. So I think that's kind of cool. And, and you know, the, the area, every time you, uh, build a new area, the daycare's gotta come with it, it seems. It's just a necessary thing and, uh, um, we can never do anything about keeping the price of daycare down, but we, we're not gonna do that here. Um, but, uh, this looks like a great facility and should fit.
And Mayor and Council, I will say at the Planning Commission that the operator of this is slightly below what the current market is. So I think some of the planning commissioners were excited to hear that, so.
Other questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
The parking lot picture, please. Is there only one access in and out of this site, this parking lot?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. It's surrounded from a fire standpoint. It's on Shenyin. So they, and also on Eagle Creek. So they, it's sprinkled, but they have access on three sides.
The width of the entrance of that parking lot is wide. Uh, it's probably deceiving here. Do we know what the width is?
It's not an exact measurement, but I'm gonna guess it's at least.
Mayor and Council members, it's, it's about twenty-six feet.
I was gonna say twenty-six.
It's right in that, right in that neighborhood. The drive aisles are minimum at twenty-four feet. So it looks like that driveway is just a little bit wider.
So it's big enough for both in and out at the same time with a little room to spare?
Yep, correct.
Okay. And then, uh, do we have a sidewalk? Yep, I see the crosswalk there. Okay.
My question is on the shared parking, um, to the north, I guess. So is this curb and gutter on the north side of the parking lot? Am I gonna have to walk through that grass to get over to the shared parking?
Mayor and Council, if you remember, there's sidewalks on both sides and we, um, when we approved the, uh.
Sidewalk here.
Bar and restaurant, uh, over on this side, um, we actually had them move the building slightly to provide, um, safe access. If people parked, they weren't hanging out onto that sidewalk.
Okay. And then my other question, uh, relates to the opportunity to, for the power lines along Eagle Creek all the way from the, you know, the west end. There's a couple two-block area here, including the apartment building and now this. Has that been, where are we at at that power line?
Uh, Mayor and Council members, that is a task that is included with the roundabout project, actually. So as part of that project, um, we'll be working with, um, S P U to relocate, um, from overhead to underground. So it'll be part of that project.
Thank you. Um, my other question is just comment, uh, Counselor Whiting, and the, the theme and look of this whole area here, um, is gonna be pretty cool. I, it's gonna bring some character to it and not that we don't have that, at least in the Greystone building. And, um, I just think it's gonna be a nice look. And that's kind of a rarity as you brought up. The, usually these are, um, stores wanna have their own. And that's kind of a rarity, as you brought up, the, usually these are, um, stores wanna have their own branding box style, and then to have it kinda integrate together, I think, is important for our community. Other, uh, questions of staff? If not?
I will add one, uh, you brought up the sidewalk, and I just wanna make sure that there's a good crosswalk. If they're gonna share parking, uh, I think it's, it's our responsibility, since we've created that ordinance, to be able to do that, to allow. You got the sidewalk, but I just wanna make sure we got a good crosswalk crossing over to be able to share that property, or parking.
Mayor and Council members, we'll, we'll work with, uh, the developer to look at that. I, I'm seeing what the mayor is indicating too. We, we probably need a couple of direct connect sidewalks, we're not walking on the grass, so we'll, we'll work with the developer on that. Um, this is a private roadway, it's not a city street.
But shared parking.
So shared parking, um, as far as needing a crosswalk, um, we, I, I don't know if your position is we shall have a crosswalk, but I would, I would ask for that latitude to, um, work with the developer on it. It's, it's not a typical place that we would really, doesn't have enough traffic necessarily.
I'll, I'll reschedule to like a curb cut or a curb walk out.
Yeah, but not.
Across the road, I don't.
Yeah, not like signs or a zebra crosswalk. We typically wouldn't put that in this location.
Just a safe cutting in the grass, yeah, through the grass.
Other questions of staff? There, as far as the, the business, the reason that we're doing this as a P U D amendment is that, so we can see the project ahead of time, right? Specifically to this lot.
Yep, Mayor and Council, um, so all of Canterbury had the old-style P U D overlay, which we're getting rid of as we do this. So the Southwest Development had a concept plan that you approved, but part of that approval requires each building to come back
Right.
um, individually, and that'll be, same will be true, uh, around the amphitheater, so you've approved that P U D strictly for the amphitheater. As Canterbury clears the barns and we build those roads, that'll be a P U D also, but each of those buildings will have to come to you. And that way, I think you, if you remember the whole idea behind doing a P U D is what you see is what you get, so this is what the building will look like. And I think Greystone and the Amory approves that you're getting exactly what we've shown you.
Oh, you, you, I, I like that approach. Then I, um, it, so this business next steps, is it, uh, we don't have a product like this in town, right, a daycare?
Mayor and Council, we have daycare in town, but this is actually a locally owned, I believe they're out of, um, Chaska, and they have two or three others in the region, and they identified Shakopee as one of their prime locations, so.
If there's no other questions of staff, does a applicant have any comments? Questions of the applicant, otherwise, Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to, uh, thank our planning commission, the unsung heroes that kinda do all the legwork for us, uh, and kinda, uh, get this stuff straight before we see it, so, uh, thanks to all the work they do. But with that, uh, I would, uh, like to offer to adopt ordinance zero-two-zero-two, tax zero-two-two, Planned Unit Development Amendment to Canterbury Southwest P U D.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Uh, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, that motion passes, thank you. Now we will move ahead then to nine A, the review of the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget and levy, and Nate will present, welcome.
As Mr. Reinhardt is getting ready, remind everyone that this is a workshop, which means that you should feel free to interrupt. You should feel free to ask questions when you want. Uh, it's designed to be a lot more informal and, uh, more conducive to actually, uh, getting ideas across, so please, if you have something, say it. And with that, Nate?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Uh, as, um, City Administrator mentioned, tonight we have a budget work session to discuss the twenty twenty-three preliminary levy and budget. Um, I'll start with a little bit of a disclaimer, it is early in the process, uh, with various unknown numbers that will need to be adjusted, um, as more information is received, including, um, insurance rates, uh, fiscal disparities, contribution numbers, uh, agreement revisions, various expenditure revenue estimates, uh, and then market value numbers will be updated as, uh, from the county as we go through the process. Uh, but we can still give you a pretty good, um, idea of where we're at at this point in time and give you a chance to provide some direction. Um, the market value, specifically the market value numbers and the fiscal disparity numbers, those impact the tax rate and some of the calculations within this, uh, PowerPoint, so those will change slightly as we get those numbers. Um, I've had the slide probably in, um, all my bu- budget presentations I've had with you, but, um, it, uh, provides some overlying financial objectives within the financial process, um, or within the budget process, uh, which include continuing to be one of the lowest, uh, tax communities in the metro, uh, continue to grow our tax capacity of existing and new property, uh, and achieve the City Council, um, strategic priorities. Uh, as administration, we'll continue to be transparent and make, um, our decisions with the future in mind to ensure the city's ongoing, uh, ability to provide quality services at a reasonable price. Uh, as we go through this budget process, we'll be posting, um, information, um, on our website, this PowerPoint and, uh, the memo provided to Council is available currently on our website. And then we also, uh, still have our taxpayer receipt tool that, um, is available. So if residents wanted to see exactly a breakdown of what they pay in terms of city services, they can put in their home value and be able to get, um, an itemized receipt.
Nate, did you say that the city of Shakopee is one of the lowest tax communities in the metro area?
Um, I would say that is accurate, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
I'm gonna get you an actual softball blob.
Uh, so, um, Shakopee, we, we continue to be, um, extremely, um, in an extremely strong financial position. Uh, city's double A long-term credit rating, uh, reflects our rapidly growing, uh, local economy, strong reserves, manageable debt burden, uh, and strong financial management practices and policies. Uh, city maintains a very diverse tax base across all sectors, and, uh, including, uh, entertainment, industrial, commercial, and also a range of housing options. Uh, emphasis, we, um, we have an emphasis on long-term financial planning, including our financial plan, fifteen-year capital improvement plan, uh, and then we also do financial projections of our various funds. Uh, key contributor to our city's financial strength was the establishment of the Internal Service Fund several years ago. Uh, these funds account for equipment, buildings, uh, park assets, and information technology, infrastructure, uh, and equipment. Uh, philosophy behind these funds is they take out large swings in the tax levy by charging, um, level rents on an annual basis. Uh, when a replacement of that equipment, um, is needed, the appropriate Internal Service Funds, uh, will make the purchase from accumulated reserves. Uh, having this system in place, um, and establishes the city up for, uh, long-term, uh, financial sustainability. Despite being in, uh, a good financial position, uh, financially, there are a number of drivers, not necessarily unique to the city of Shakopee, uh, that may, um, that have an impact on our current and future budgets. Uh, the state, um, annually distributes five hundred and seventy million of local government aid to cities across the state. Uh, this is up from five hundred and thirty-four million in twenty eighteen. Uh, as you're aware, Shakopee is not a recipient of local government aid, uh, increasing our reliance on property tax, taxes to pay for our city services.
And, and to put that, if I may, in a little perspective, uh, there's a city in southern Minnesota that I'm familiar with that receives forty-nine percent of its budget from local government aid. And we get nothing.
We're doing so well that we're a giver in fiscal disparities.
Well, I'm glad that you said that, because we are also the tenth largest contributor to fiscal disparities, which has always been one of my personal issues, and, uh, I've been on multiple task forces, you know, in regards to fiscal disparities and, and that dragon will never be slayed. Uh, you can expect that we will continue to march up the, the fiscal disparity, uh, ladder, if you will, and, uh, with all of the development that we have going on, you know, we will be more than the tenth largest contributor, we'll be a lot more, uh, coming up.
Nice. They say that it's better to give than receive, and.
Well, that's not true.
And that maybe not in fiscal disparities if you build a, and develop a very well-rounded community.
Get hammered for being successful.
Yep, um, as we were discussing, we're the tenth largest contributor in fiscal disparities, it represents about eight percent of our tax capacity. Uh, other cities metrowide, um, you know, are seeing a property tax benefit from Shakopee's industrial and commercial growth. Uh, the Consumer, uh, Price Index, uh, through the midpoint of twenty twenty-two, uh, was showing an increase of nine point one percent, which is the largest, uh, annual cost of, um, living increase or a cost of, cost of increase in the past thirty years. Uh, the increase were broad-based, um, with gasoline, shelter, and food being the largest contributors. Uh, the city itself has seen its impacts in, uh, fuel, street materials, energy, uh, energy costs and capital projects, and really just about everything. Personnel accounts for nearly seventy percent of city operational costs, and again, not unique to Shakopee, most cities are approximately in that same range. Uh, as with other sectors, uh, local governments are experiencing, uh, staffing challenges in many areas, including police officers, firefighters, and part-time positions. Uh, the city does desire to remain competitive with our wages, uh, ensuring that we match the market. Uh, future market adjustments would all, could, um, have a significant impact and budgetary impacts. Uh, current and future escalations are expected in health insurance and workers' compensation insurance, uh, most notably workers' comp, um, from PTSD-related costs and claims of public safety statewide. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, Scott County began distributing the shortfall in funding for, uh, joint prosecution costs, uh, net of related fine revenue. Uh, the allocation was phased over a two-year period. Uh, for twenty twenty-three, this results in a fifty thousand dollar increase, um, for the city, and will likely increase as we continue in the future. Um, and then as Shakopee's population development grows, uh, the demand for city services will also grow. Uh, as an example, over the past five years, the city has added, uh, fourteen point one miles of street, twenty-three miles of sidewalks, trails, and seventy-five acres of parks open space, uh, increasing the demand for, uh, things like snow removal, street maintenance landscaping, um, and then additional funds for future replacement of, of park and infrastructure equipment. And then, uh, lastly, uh, statewide residential property saw a sharp increase in, uh, value for property taxes for, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this far outpaced, uh, the more moderate increases in commercial and industrial property types. Uh, this creates a shift in property tax, uh, burden from commercial, industrial to residential properties. Uh, as a result, homeowners can expect an increase in their property taxes prior to any change in, uh, city budget or levy, uh, which will occur for, um, not just the city, but school and county taxes as well, and again, this is not, um, unique to the city of Shakopee. Um, as, uh, you're aware, we've seen significant growth in market value over the past year. Uh, for taxes payable in twenty twenty-three, uh, our taxable market value grew by seven point two billion, uh, which is an increase of one point two billion, or nineteen point nine percent, uh, from last year. Uh, new construction accounts for a hundred and twenty-seven million, ten point six percent of this increase. Uh, obviously, new construction allows us to, um, spread the tax levy against a larger tax base, uh, which reduces the property tax burden on, um, existing taxpayers. Uh, residential and apartment, uh, market value grew at the fastest rates. Uh, resident, residential value grew by nine hundred and eighty-three million, or twenty-six point seven percent. Uh, that includes sixty-five million of new growth. Uh, and then on the flip side, we did see much smaller, uh, increases in commercial and industrial property types. Uh, since two thousand and eighteen, um, we've seen the taxable market value of, of the city increase by two point nine million, uh, that's sixty-seven percent since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the city levies a flat dollar for taxes, uh, which is spreading against all taxable properties in proportion to their percentage of tot- total tax capacity of the city. Uh, residential represents fifty-one percent of the city's tax capacity. Uh, this comparison, comparison of this chart to last year shows that residential, uh, property taxes play approximately four point one percent more of total tax, uh, capacity in twenty twenty-three. To kinda simplify things, this chart is in percentages, but if you wanna look at it in, in dollar terms, it works out to, you know, approximately the same way. Little bit odd, but close. Uh, so for every dollar, the city requesting our levy for twenty twenty-two residential would have paid about forty-seven cents for every dollar. In twenty twenty-three, it's about fifty-one cents of every dollar. Um, and then prior to getting into any city budget numbers, I just wanted to provide an illustration of that property tax shift, um, again, as a result of residential values increasing, um, at a faster pace than we're seeing other property types increase. Um, I used the change in taxable market value of the median value, um, median value home, and then the median value of all the other property types, or the three property types listed here, I guess, apartment, commercial, and industrial. Um, and then increased those property value types at the same rate as total growth of the existing values for that property type. So these again are hypothetical properties, but provide the example. Uh, prior to, um, even, um, adding a, a dime or a cent to the city budget, median value home would see about a four point seven percent increase in city property taxes, or about forty-one, but, forty-one dollars, where, uh, apartments would see a three point three-five percent decrease, commercial fourteen percent decrease, and industrial ten percent decrease, so, just to put things in perspective before we get into, um, what we're proposing as far as budget and levy. Um, so staff is recommending a preliminary city levy of twenty-three million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand. Uh, this is an increase of one point four million, or six point two-five percent, uh, over last year. Uh, and then the preliminary E D A levy of five hundred thousand, which is, uh, flat from the previous year. Uh, we are proposing to continue with the seven hundred thousand capital improvement levy. Uh, the abatement levy, uh, will increase for the first abatement, um, payment for the Churney Industries in twenty twenty-three. And then the debt service levy, uh, will increase for the twenty twenty-two A improvement bond, uh, approv- approved earlier this year. Uh, the required debt service levy is three hundred and forty-eight thousand. Uh, however, staff is proposing to use two hundred thousand of local project funds, uh, in order to phase that increase over a two-year period. Uh, this would require Council approval. Uh, just a reminder, preliminary levy is the maximum, uh, levy the city can, can set, um, well, the city can levy, uh, between, and that has to be adopted, uh, by September thirtieth, between September thirtieth and the final adoption, um, that levy cannot increase, it can only decrease. Uh, and then to put things into, uh, context, um, when we talk about a one percent levy increase-decrease, uh, that amounts to about two hundred and twenty-five thousand of funding.
Questions? Uh, Counselor Whiting?
Uh, on the fire department supervisor positions, uh, looks like we're creating some positions. Wouldn't, wouldn't we just create, uh, I don't know who I should be asking, maybe chief, um, wouldn't these just be lieutenant positions or captain positions? Or, or why are we creating a new hierarchy?
I do have a slide on that, but I can kinda discuss that since, um, since that was brought up here, and let me just kinda get.
We'll get there when we get there?
We can, and then I can, I can try to tackle that question too.
Yeah, if you can.
Either way.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, here's a summary of the twenty twenty-three preliminary general fund budget. Um, so the budget incorporates the general fund portion of the preliminary tax levy, along with, uh, the budget impact items that we'll go through on the next few slides. Uh, past few years, we've seen a lot of building permit volume, uh, with larger projects, we may see revenues collected in one year, and then incur some of the inspection costs the following year. Uh, the preliminary budget, uh, utilizes two hundred and fifty thousand of those committed revenues for the twenty twenty-three budget, which is the same amount as the previous year. These numbers may change, um, a little bit between the preliminary levy and the final levy, as we final, fine-tune some of the numbers. They may, um, fluctuate between the two dep- two depart- or between departments, but, um, this is currently what we have in our budget, our preliminary budget. So starting with revenues, uh, overall, the city's anticipating a net increase in non-property tax revenues of, uh, a million fifty-nine thousand. Uh, we have estimated, uh, the Spock pilot contribution to increase by three hundred thousand. Uh, this is based on the contribution rate of five point five percent and total revenues of fifty-seven point three million, uh, which is similar to what we're seeing in actuals this year and last year. Uh, the city's building permit revenues have been strong over the past few years, uh, with the influx of commercial and residential development. Uh, city is forecasting a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase in budgeted building permit revenue for twenty twenty-three. Uh, this is based on anticipated developments, but, uh, potential slower pace for single-family home. Uh, in total, the city is budgeting two point nine million for building permit revenue, which compares to a three-year actual average of three point nine million. So, um, about a million dollars below what we've averaged over the past three years. Rental housing, uh, the rental housing program is anticipated to be implemented at the beginning of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the city has budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand for, uh, license and inspection revenue related to that program. Uh, and then municipal state aid for maintenance is the portion of the statewide gas tax, uh, that has provided the city to maintain state-aided streets. Uh, city has budgeted a ninety thousand dollar increase for that. Investment income, um, out, which is allocated really across all funds, um, so this would just be the general fund portion. Uh, but with rising interest rates, we budgeted an increase of eighty thousand for, uh, investment earnings in the general fund. Uh, city recently extended school resource officer contract with the school district for additional three years. Uh, the contract offsets the cost of three officers that we provided in the school year. Uh, we've increased, um, police services for that, um, for that amount of forty-one thousand. And then the last item here is the tax abatement, uh, which is budgeted as a negative revenue. This will include that first abatement payment for Churney Industries. So that is the revenue side. Um, on the expenditure side of the budget, uh, we're forecasting an increase of two point three million. Uh, like most other cities, um, our operational costs are, are primarily being driven by personnel. Of the two point three million dollar increase, one point six million is related to personnel. Uh, the city has three unions, which is the patrol, um, sergeants, and then public works. All three union contracts have been settled through the end of, uh, twenty- All three union contracts have been settled through the end of two thousand and twenty-three. The contracts include a market market adjustments of a market adjustments of two point five percent. The preliminary two thousand and twenty-three budget has been built with the assumption that the non-union employees would see the equivalent two point five percent cost of living adjustment. Across all employee employee groups, including the union groups, the cost of living adjustment amounts to approximately five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. During two thousand and twenty-two, the city council approved changes to the part-time pay plan. That was a result of the independent consultant review of the part-time employee compensation and classification, classification in comparison to the peer cities. The budget impact from these changes will first be realized with the two thousand and twenty-three budget and that amounts to a hundred and forty thousand. The city is utilizing that same independent consultant to complete a full-time employee compensation and classification review. That completed report is not yet available, but preliminary review indicates there would be a range of adjustment for the various pay ranges from one to nine percent should be considered. Those adjustments would continue to align our pay ranges with the midpoint of our ten peer peer comparison cities, which is consistent with the previous goals and ensure our wages remain market competitive.
You say one to nine percent?
Yeah, it's it's the way it's, and of course, we've got to kind of dig in the data data a little bit further. But they analyzed positions specifically, but then looked at our pay scale as the different grades. And depending on the different grades within the pay scale, they've assigned a one to nine percent.
So folks out there know, we're we're going with the two point five percent increase for cost of living plus step increases for everybody across the board, which you get a step increase every year.
No.
Until you're until you reach the top of your pay.
You do not get a step increase every year. You get step increases at anniversary dates depending, but not everybody gets a step increase every year.
An anniversary date up until the point of the top pay.
Correct, but it's not every year.
Unless they hit the top pay.
No.
It's an anniversary. You just said anniversary.
It's an anniversary. It's two, but what are the different anniversary years? Do you know off the top of your head? I don't know.
Well.
It would it would be every year to me. So the step increases would be based on your one-year anniversary date. You would receive your step increases until you get the the max.
Every year?
Correct.
Until you reach the top.
Until you get the top and then you just get the call up.
Two point five percent plus these step increases and you factored in step increases of a hundred and fifty-five K for next year.
Correct. What I what I'm, well, so the what the compensation and classification study did, so which is step separate from these step increases, right? So what they're looking at is they're looking at the pay ranges and I mean, you may have, you know, based on the grade, you may have someone from finance, you may have someone from police, you may have someone whatever have be the same score within that grade. They're comparing those specific positions, but then looking at the grades so that if you're within that grade, the whole pay scale would be adjusted depending on where we're at towards the market. And actually, if you look at the year initial findings, most of the larger increases were actually at the lower pay grades on there. But I think for our on our end, we got to do a little bit more research as far as how something like that would be implemented. We've got a few questions to ask, so I I don't know if we're necessarily there with knowing what the dollar amount and what the actual amount will end up.
That pay study is something we do regularly every few years, isn't it?
Every four years to five years, I think five years was the last one we did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other question on the the health insurance, is that at this point an estimate? I know in the past that's been higher as an estimate, as it's August and it's not firm. Is that an estimate and is, but are we working towards that number?
It it is an estimate and I believe next Thursday I will have more of a clearer direction on that. I believe that's when we get our data. So that's one of those things that are, you know, here's here's your placeholder estimate at this point in time, and I probably should have put estimate on there. Same thing, same thing with workers' comp. I don't know what the rates are going to be. I don't know what workers' comp will be until November. So with that, it's just reaching out to our insurance agent and trying to get kind of an idea based on what they're seeing, what they're expecting the the market to be, but.
And I know if that ever went up, we would look at going self-insured and from that aspect on that.
Not with workers' comp.
Huh?
Not with workers' comp.
Right. Health insurance. Yes, okay, I apologize.
So to kind of clarify your your previous question too, in the past couple of years, I think we've had either twelve or fifteen coming into the preliminary levy and each time we've brought it down.
Right.
So I think this time we just looked at it and said, you know, last year we were at, I think, I got the number in here, four and a half percent for two thousand and twenty-two. You know, let's just try to start with a more reasonable number and and, you know.
Thanks.
Yep. Yeah, and so that the two hundred thousand that I have in there is a placeholder for the full-time pay plan adjustments. So it's separate from the cost of living adjustment, so it's basically a market adjustment to get those wages in line with what we're seeing our peer comparison cities do. And I don't know what that implementation cost will exactly be. There's obviously different ways we can go about implementing it too. You know, whether it's implemented at the start of the year or mid-year or phasing it over a period, there's there's still some things that need to be worked out. So I assume that would come back almost in a separate proposal.
Two hundred K is also separate from the hundred and fifty-five step increases.
Correct.
So.
Culture layman.
What what happened to our self-insurance fund?
We still have the health insurance self, we have that, we have those funds available. And I think the last time we put any money in it was probably three, four years ago, probably three years ago. And as the mayor said, if we have a real wide range on our health insurance, we can then look at moving forward and being self-insured. So we we have that available.
Seems like we either use it or refund it or something.
Well, I mean, you know, i- if we have a health insurance crease increase of three to four percent, you know, it doesn't make sense for us right now to go ahead and pull the trigger on being self-insured. I think at some point, and frankly, it's also a nice, something to hold over the insurance company's head when we say, you know, we can, we can walk at any time.
How much is in that fund, do we know?
Uh, we'll have to figure that out.
I'd I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, are are we ready for comments yet?
You can comment anytime, please.
Slide specific and.
Well.
There's more slides to go through.
What do we have? Two and a half years of a pandemic, which crippled everybody economically and the way the federal government spent. Here we are with inflation for the next five, six years. Everybody's getting pinched and I want to see this as low as possible because I know households are pinched. They've got inflation pressures, gas pressures, they got the pressures too.
And and our goal has always been to have the lowest possible levy. And this is the lowest levy of any city that we are aware of currently. We we have done a lot to ensure that this is a real tight budget, recognizing once again our long-term goals. And and if we were to simply say, okay, we're going to have three percent this year, three percent is is not a real number. It's not based on anything. It's based upon somebody saying, let's do three percent. What we have here is an actual constructed long-term budget that keeps all of the goals that the the council has had in the past in as part of the makeup of this particular budget. And Nate and I were talking a little early earlier, what was, you know, if we were to wipe out everything, what was the most we could squeeze out of this?
It would, yeah, it's it's difficult because, I mean, we've even looked at line line, you know, we've gone through, you know, from a finance perspective and looked at some of our lines and there's nothing that's going down in cost. I mean, there's, if you look at personnel, which is, like I said, our biggest driver, that's those costs are obviously increasing. You're looking at, you know, supplies, materials, any anything you want to name. There there's not a contracted service that we have or a technology item or anything that's, you know, that their cost isn't going up next year, right?
And we are one of the lowest tax communities in the metro area. That's incredibly important. This budget will keep us there because, again, it is the lowest percentage raise of any budget that we have been able to find, period.
And I think when I look at this, I, you know, with a levy that I believe was started this preliminary idea of that you had a bigger number when you started off, but we're driving the tax rate down. We're building market value, seven point two billion dollars worth of market value within our community. That's moved up significantly, over a billion dollars just this year. I look at the the general levy at twenty-three, but our overall overall revenues are at thirty-three point nine. A third of our budget is not based off the taxpayer. It's based off of, I guess, user fees, right? That that percentage actually, over the last five years, I think, has increased pretty well. That you start, you start looking at other ways of of revenues rather than on the levy-based aspect. The rear, the pandemic's in our rearview mirror. I know we have some inflation here, but I think that's gonna recede here down the line. I don't think it's going to take three or four years. I think actually as a city, if we're in charge of the board of directors of the city, I think we came, I think we came out of the pandemic very well compared to some other communities that are reliant on a city sales tax or some of their issues that they had. So that's my take on it. Do you want to proceed here?
Sure, I'll just touch on the last couple of items. So health insurance, again, that's an estimate. We'll have, you know, better numbers here hopefully in the next next week. The workers' comp, so the five to twenty-five percent, we did five for most employees and twenty-five percent for public safety. I don't know if those numbers are good. I have, I have a feeling the total dollar amount is probably right in the ballpark of what what I would expect. I don't think that'll change much. And then the step increases, again, you know, when hired employees are placed at the wage scale based on their experience level and they advance to the next step until they hit that top of that pay scale, so that's where that hundred and fifty-five thousand comes from. And then continuing, we are proposing some changes to full-time staff positions. Full-time parks maintenance maintenance operator position, total cost of ninety-three thousand eight hundred and forty. This position would ensure, you know, appropriate level of staffing for the city's growing open space. Parks and streetscaping, which include downtown Parklight, Stagecoach, Ridge Creek, Jennifer Lane, Windermere, Windermere Bluff, Valley Crest, Quarry Lake and West End. Dog parks, for example, parks that we've, you know, recently added that has added the need for that position. A full-time rental housing inspector, total cost of that position of a hundred and eight thousand.
The rental inspector will be paid out of, not out of the levy really, it's out of the building permit fees, right?
So the idea is that it would be covered through the rental housing license and inspection revenues, at least a very high percentage of that. And then the three fire department supervisor positions, we're proposing to implement these on July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Net cost with implemented in a half a year would be fifty thousand two hundred. The three full-time shift supervisors would work rotating twenty-four hour shifts. Currently, on-call fire officers, which is the deputy chiefs, fire marshal, captains and lieutenants, provide that supervision at night and on weekends. They receive a monthly stipend and compensation for those hours and then respond to, or the for the hours that they respond to call, so on more like on-call versus the firefighters on the, that would be on these twenty-four hour shifts, which would receive compensation for their entire shift, which would either be sixteen or twelve hours. With the current on-call positions, they're not present when needed for the shift change meetings, pre-trip truck inspection coordinating, executing training, sign-station duty, scheduling changes and employee oversight. So all these are important with employee safety, accountability and consistency, so having somebody there.
Culture waiting.
So, um, the next question is, is once we put this supervisor position in place, aren't there going to be the fire department and relief association coming back to us saying, well, these are lieutenants, these are officer positions? Shouldn't they be getting out, which I guess my question is, which pay is going to be higher, the lieutenant, captain or supervisor?
So this would remove, uh, my understanding is would remove the the stipend from those, some of those positions that are are currently there and they'd be replaced now with a city full-time employee. So that those.
A full-time firefighter as a supervisor, not necessarily a captain or a lieutenant.
That is my understanding and I can get, I don't think Rick's here, but I can get, have him reach out.
I'm just concerned that we might run into trouble or or ended up having to pay him twice.
Yep, so where the the net cost comes in, so it's of the new, I guess, the pay for these firefighters would be offset with what was being paid to on-call and.
And then I would probably want to see an org chart on that, how that's going to roll out for the chain of command.
Essentially, these these are, these positions currently exist only in the form of supervisors who work for us forty hours a week and then we are paying them to do this on the weekends when their time comes up. So what we're doing is we're replacing that. That is going away and and then these positions then become full-time. So what we're paying them no longer exists. That's why the overall net cost for these four positions is fifty thousand dollars implementing it in the middle of the year.
Just to cover weekends and.
So so literally, everything else is already being taken care of. It's just fifty thousand more and you're getting four full-time positions.
Okay.
Implemented mid-year.
Right. So I had a conversation with one of our senior members of the fire department last week and we talked about this thing. And he, he said, this this helps even make us more efficient overall from a supervisor situation.
Well, it absolutely does and and the reality is, is you're grinding out your supervisors right now.
Right.
They're they're putting a lot of time and effort in up and above their forty-hour work week. And it's 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 breaking them down.
That's what I was told. Okay.
And we're having a hard time finding firefighters. Every community is.
I didn't understand what was going on there, so thank you.
Then the only other item on the slide is the election judges, non-election year next year, so we've seen the reduction of that cost. So other expenditures, so again, we utilize those internal service funds to accumulate funds for the purchase of replacement equipment. Funding source of the annual rents, which are charged to the appropriate departments within the general fund and other funds. That increases the general fund rent charges total ninety-six thousand three hundred. The breakdown of that is equipment rent, thirty-five thousand nine hundred, which would include the additional vehicles, where like the electrical electric vehicles added, and then also seeing an increase in replacement costs. Additionally, when we move the self-contained or we have moved the self-contained breathing apparatus, annual replacements from the CIP fund to the operating fund. No net impact, but it's between, you know, two different line items now, so classify different in the operating budget. Absent of this change, the equipment rent would have been fifty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars higher. Twenty-nine thousand nine hundred for park facilities rent. That would be the added Ridge Creek, Scenic Heights and Timber Trails Park. Building and building rent increasing by twenty-seven thousand two hundred and then a small increase for IT rent. Then it changes of all other expenditures, including or excluding personnel and rent is six hundred and five thousand, seventy thousand for Tyler building permit software, which would be the Tyler system rental license module related to the rental housing program. Sixty-six thousand for election pulpad and tabulator upgrades. Ten K would be for additional tabulator and then the remaining would be to update the forty-four pulpads that we have. The fire department SCBA, again, moving from operating, so no net impact there, but just classified as two different items. Motor fuel, we've budgeted a twenty-five percent increase across all divisions, which is fifty-three thousand five hundred. The county prosecution costs allocation of fifty thousand four hundred. Credit card fees of thirty-one thousand five hundred, which is primarily related to really an increase in revenues for building permit revenues. But it's, we're seeing more and more, you know, most of our payments now are our credit card.
We're just seeing more.
More activity.
More driving it that way.
Yeah.
Right.
More volume.
Can we recoup that cost?
We do, we so we do charge, we do, we have, actually have a couple of different fees. So if people pay at a credit card here at City Hall, they are charged a three percent processing fee. And then if you're paying through Tyler Tyler software, there's a, I can't think of the name.
Portal?
Processing fee, electronic processing fee that they pay for each transaction.
So is this, this credit card fee, does this represent the cost that we incur for using credit cards?
Correct, yes. So as the number of credit card payments we receive go up and the volume, um, you know, certain of the revenues have gotten up over the past couple of years. We've, it, it, it somewhat translates to the three hundred, or the, yeah, the three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand increase in building permit revenue we have budgeted this year. You would expect to also have increased.
But what I'm saying is the thirty-one-five is the credit card fees that we acquire from our staff using city credit cards.
No.
No.
Oh, no, I'm, it's on the revenue side. So as we accept credit cards, we're paying the.
We're payment.
Processing fee.
So if you're a member of the public.
Why I asked in the beginning, are we recouping our credit card cost when somebody comes in to pay for something with a credit card? And you said we were charging them three percent.
Yep.
So we are recuperating that cost. So, what's the thirty-one-five represent?
The, uh, boom, the processing fees are within the revenues already, so they're already included within the revenues. So this is the expense side of it, so it's the other side of it.
Okay, I'm still, I'm still not following here.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that since we're already recouping the cost, really do we have an additional thirty-one thousand five hundred dollar cost? Um, I, it's included within our revenue line items. I mean, we don't have a, we're not netting them together, I guess.
So essentially, you've got, you've got your revenues, and thirty-one-five of that is the credit card fees, and this is the other side of the balance sheet where we're identifying that as an expense.
Where it's going to the processor.
Correct, that's a processing fee.
Because you're getting charged that amount.
Yep.
And you're collecting it and sending it up.
Yep.
Kinda like state, state sales tax in my business. I collect it, I send it to the state.
And we're gonna, okay.
Yeah, I think that was the best way to describe it. Two separate sides of the ledger, we're not netting it together, so you're seeing it on both sides. Um, then, um, a couple of smaller charges, the street seal coat, twenty thousand. Um, we increased across all divisions, natural gas, which is heating costs by sixteen thousand nine hundred and ten percent. And then miscellaneous net department adjustments, so, uh, based on a preliminary review, um, we've identified, well, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, uh, across all divisions. A hundred and forty thousand we specifically have identified, and then we have, um, about a hundred thousand available as we kinda dig deeper into these divisional budgets, so, um, that's what that represents. The debt service levy, um, this will be required to incre- or required to increase as a result of the bond issue earlier this year, the twenty-twenty-two general obligation improvement bond issue. Uh, those were used to fund current year projects, twenty-twenty-three projects, as identified in the capital improvement fund. Um, the required debt service levy, um, for this bond is three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, so three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. Uh, to offset the increase of the debt service levy, staff is recommending the transfer of two-hundred thousand from the city's local projects fund to the debt service fund. Uh, this effectively would allow the city to step in to this, um, annual debt service levy over a two-year period.
Culture waiting.
Uh, when we talked about using, um, those funds, the local project funds, did we talk about using it to pay down this bond?
We didn't, we did not, so this would be something that council would have to, this would come separate to council, and council would have the option to approve it or.
Cause I know we had a bunch of projects in mind, I know you got your monuments. A few other people got some projects through, uh, um, we got, uh, staff got their raises, but everything else has been put in a pile, I think we're waiting out elections, I don't know what we're doing here, but, uh, now we're trying to spend it for something we hadn't talked about. I understand we wanna keep our levy down, but, uh, this is not where I thought the money was coming from for this kinda project, I would say we would levy that.
We, we can certainly throw that onto the levy. Um, you know, what we were trying to do was to keep the levy low, uh, and we wanted to try to facilitate as opposed to taking a big bite of it all at once. Uh, so as, this is gonna, this would raise it just under a point, uh, a percentage. Um, but we could certainly put that onto the levy, I mean, that.
Others on this, I, you know, we're trying to drive the levy down. Uh, if that two-hundred thousand out of the local project fund, if that goes back to the levy, uh, one percent of our levy is two, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, so now you'd be looking at seven point one-two.
Can we start with what twenty-twenty-two A improvement bonds, uh, funded?
Yep, so, um, so the, but the bond itself, we issued about ten million. So we had five point one million that went to tax increment, and then four point, sorry, five point nine million that went to tax increment, and then four point one went to the improvement. So it all went into the capital improvement fund, so that would be the levy portion of that.
What was the project?
Um, so we, so really we looked at it as, here's what the projects are that we've identified in the capital improvement fund, and here's, um, basically the funding that would go into the fund to be, provide funding for the projects as a whole. So that would include your pedestrian br- uh, not your pedestrian bridge, but the, the, the one-sixty-nine pedestrian bridge. It would include, um, the, uh, street improvement projects that we had identified within that fund.
Street improvements were part of it, and the other half was, uh, in the Canterbury project, and it wasn't fifty-fifty.
Did some of this go to Twelfth Avenue too? Some of them improvements on that?
Well, Twelfth Avenue would be part of Canterbury, so it would be separate from what would be part of the property tax levy.
I already said I'm all for making the levy as low as possible.
Right.
Yeah, and then, uh, just for reference, um, the local projects fund, two-point-nine million available, so two-hundred thousand obviously is, would still leave.
We never talked about that, that, that we're gonna, oh, we're gonna just offset some of these, uh, other levy bond issues, uh.
Well, you're right, we haven't, but as I've said from the very beginning, that, you know, we will, we will talk about when things come up that we can use that funding for.
But the projects never come up.
Well, um, we have Sand Venture, uh, that's sitting out there. Uh, we are tentatively looking at probably, uh, asking for a million of that funding to go to, towards Sand Venture. Uh, we, we have, uh, other projects that we will continue to, to look at if it seems to fit, and.
Just off the list.
All right, let's, uh, let's stick to the point here a little bit, um, and just go down the line here. Um, there's been a recommendation proposal from staff for two-hundred grand from the local project fund to use this, uh, to help out on the twenty-two A bond in, uh, improvement levy. Would you, and this isn't binding, but we're trying to build consensus, cause I believe it would have to come back.
It would come back, yeah.
For our full approval, but, um, otherwise, if, if there's a, a change, um, this affects a whole bunch of other numbers, right? So, um, what, uh, comment on this, Council Brennan?
I can understand, um, I, I'm with Mr. Whiting, however, that, you know, that, that wasn't what we were anticipating using it for, but, um, I can understand the, the need to do that.
Counselor Lehman?
At a minimum, if it was more than that, I'd be okay with that. I'm always looking to offset the, the levy, this is a really bad time for levy increases and property value increases.
The value of homes are going up, which, uh, adds to.
Comes down.
Value, um.
Except for taxes.
So, you would be in favor of?
Yes.
As, as we move forward, okay? And Counsel Whiting is opposed to this, that's fine. Counsel Contreras?
I mean, if it's needed, again, I.
It's only needed so that we keep our tax, you know, we're, we're not levying for these projects that we should be levying for. This is an improvement that should be levied for, not taken out of that fund that we're gonna use for special projects that, uh, now this has been planned on, this has been something, these, uh, these improvements have been planned on, it's not a special project.
No, the, the bond levy aspect is the proposal, the, the bond levy.
How we pay for it, okay.
Right now, we're trying to pay for things that we currently have, and you're talking about spending money that's not ours on things we don't have.
It is ours.
That we're gonna have future cost maintaining.
It is ours, and this is already something we planned, we planned on levying it.
I look at the overall impact that for two-hundred grand, if we're gonna have a levy at, with a, at six point one-two percent versus almost seven point one-two percent.
And that's an election year, I get it.
We're trying to do what we can here, but, okay. Um, I think there would be enough consensus as we move forward on the proposal with the idea that the proposal would have to come back for council approval.
That is correct, yeah, and then, then the only other, um, uh, levy funded debt issue is the twenty-sixteen abatement bond, uh, which funded the community center and the ICE rate. Um, we're proposing, uh, no change in that levy. Uh, so both of these would be canceling a portion of that debt service reduction. We have available fund balance within the abatement levy, um, to buy that down a smaller dollar amount to the equivalent of last year. Um, and both these would have to be approved by city council, so we'd bring both those back as a resolution. Uh, just one slide here to touch on the EDA. Um, we do not have a full budget yet developed for the EDA, um, at this point in time. Uh, the Shakopee EDA has the statutory authority to levy a small percentage up to point zero one eight-five percent of city's taxable market value, uh, which for twenty, uh, twenty-three, uh, would be a maximum amount of, uh, million one hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, the EDA and city council can set the levy to, up to, um, up to this cap. Uh, we're not, uh, proposing any changes for twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the EDA is, uh, a levy that is identified separate on the property tax statement. Within the EDA, personnel includes the economic development coordinator, um, and, at fifty percent, and then fifty percent the planning and development director. Uh, additional funding, uh, provided through the contribution of half percent of revenues from the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. Uh, the twenty-twenty-three budget anticipates that contribution would be two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand five hundred based on, uh, the same dollar amount we use for the formula for the general fund. Um, the EDA, um, has now, uh, acquired the master lease for the River City Center. Um, just for your informational purposes, that activity, which would be lease revenue and expenditures, uh, we're gonna account for it as a separate fund of the EDA. Um, so we'll have that, um, separated and tracked as we move forward with that.
Just make a comment on the, when I was, we were working through the, the Shakopee Public Utilities, pilot contribution and a, uh, relook at that, it, uh, uh, it actually was a unanimous, both from the utility and the city's standpoint, that a percentage of that pilot, small percentage be dedicated directly to the EDA. Spuck's support of that was, was both by staff and the president, uh, of the utility. And, uh, I think that's a great win for the, the city, the Spuck, and the EDA, um, to get some dedicated dollars directly in there, that will happen every year.
Yeah, um, Spuck, Spuck wanted to participate in economic development, and, and they felt that was the best way to do it, so, um, yeah, but definitely.
Yeah, and then, uh, we do intend to bring back the preliminary EDA levy at the EDA meeting next, next September, so you will see, um, the budget for that at the next meeting. Uh, this chart, uh, compares the city's tax capacity and rate over the past ten years, uh, including the twenty-twenty-three preliminary levy, uh, based on the preliminary assessment value, uh, which again will have some changes. Uh, the proposed tax levy, um, will decrease the city's tax rate from thirty-two point one percent to twenty-eight point eight-three-six percent, uh, which is a decrease of three point two-seven-five percent. Uh, so even with the proposed increase in levy, we are seeing a, a pretty significant drop in the tax rate. Um, and then actually the biggest, uh, decrease we've seen, um, in this ten-year period on the chart. Uh, the value of the median value home has increased from two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand seven hundred to three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand five hundred over the past year. Uh, again, median value is if you lined up all the homes from, uh, lowest to highest value, it's the house that falls in the middle. Uh, this is the, uh, this is an increase of sixty-one thousand eight hundred or twenty-one point seven percent. Uh, the chart above provides information on the median value home and city property taxes paid since twenty-seventeen. Uh, orange bar and the amounts on the left axis represent the median value home. Uh, the gray shaded area, uh, amount, and the amounts on the right axis, uh, is the property tax amount paid on that median value home. Uh, so since twenty-seventeen, uh, median value home has increased by sixty-eight percent, uh, compared to just a thirty-six percent increase in property taxes paid by that home. So you, the value of the home is increasing at a faster rate than the property taxes paid.
So your, your home value is going up faster than any taxation?
Correct.
Right, and then I was trying to do some analysis on the, the other day, back in two thousand seventeen, when that house was worth two-hundred-and-seven thousand seven hundred, I found some difficulty finding a house of that value in her. But if the house stayed the same through all these years via the tax rate, then the, the taxes would have gone down on that house, right?
Yeah, I actually, um, I have that, well, at least over the past year, so, um, just to kinda follow up on that comment, cause it somewhat relates to this. Uh, but the median value homes, so, uh, again, and in, over the past year, it increased sixty-one thousand eight hundred. Um, that tax on this, um, in, will increase a hundred and five bucks or eleven point nine-five percent based on the preliminary proposal here. So, um, a hundred and five dollars, eleven point nine, nine-five percent annually in proper taxes. Um, absent any change in value, so if it had the same value as it did last year, uh, you'd have a tax decrease of eighty-nine dollars or ten percent. So, obviously it's gonna be dependent on how much, you know, each individual property changed value, but for the median value home, that's what a typical person could expect. Um, then, yeah, again, I like to talk about the one percent increase/decrease, what that actually means. In terms of the city's levy, so a one percent increase in property tax levy or a one percent decrease amounts to about ten dollars on the median value home, so when you're talking about making a one percent change, you're impacting the median value home by about ten dollars in property taxes. And so I showed this chart, same chart earlier, but this is with the six point two-five percent, um, change in levy, so exact same chart, only accounting for the six point two-five percent change. If you are a commercial industrial property owner, uh, you're actually seeing a decrease in property taxes for next year. Um, so based on what we're currently proposing, um, they'd see, for commercially, you'd see a eight percent decrease, industrially, you see about a four percent decrease.
Questions?
Um, and then, um, uh, you've probably seen the slide before, but Shakopee is below comparable in surrounding cities when it comes to the cost comparison of our city property taxes, sanitary sewer and stormwater charges, so these are the, what we control as a city. Uh, the following chart provides the twenty-twenty-two annual cost of services for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, um, value home, slightly below our, our median value home in Shakopee. Um, but at, and, um, also five thousand gallons of water usage a month. Um, so, uh, you'll see that we're, um, at the very bottom of that chart. Uh, we did hire a consultant to perform a utility rate study for both utilities at the end of last year. Uh, currently, we are anticipating, uh, proposing rates that are consistent with those results, um, which would amount to about a two-point-one percent increase in sewer and one percent, uh, increase in stormwater, the annual cost. So, um, we'll bring back our, you know, operating budgets for the utilities later this year, but first glance, just to put everything in perspective, it's consistent with what, um, we expected from that study. Um, and then, uh, there was one state law, um, creating new requirements for the property tax statement notices that are mailed by the county. Uh, so the law requires the city to provide additional information. Um, it basically creates a one-page budget summary, uh, that will be in that property tax notice that's mailed in November. So the city's required to put this together, as well as the county and the school district will also have this one-page budget summary. Um, so what it is, is basically, it's, uh, requires that you have your property tax levy amount and the percent change and the dollar change, uh, in comparison to last year, as well as, um, uh, different revenue and category types. So if you were to look back at, um, slide ten, uh, which lists out, you know, property taxes, special assessments, uh, those type of categories, as well as expenditures by general government, public safety, streets and sanitation, et cetera, it's that type of comparison, so it'll be total expenditures we have budgeted for twenty-twenty-three in comparison to what we budgeted in twenty-twenty-two and the percent change and increase. So that will be in your notice that you'll get in November, and everybody's notice. Um, and then, um, not necessarily my area of expertise here, but wanting to mention there are a few refund programs for property taxes that are, uh, administered by the state of Minnesota. Uh, the more common being the regular and the special property tax refunds. Um, the difference with the special refund is, doesn't have any, uh, income limitation that the regular fund, uh, regular refund would have. Uh, this may be something residents wanna explore, these options, um, if they depend on how their property taxes fall this year.
Given the increase in some folks' home, homes, and the, over the last. Given the increase in some folks' home homes in the, over the last year, they may, more people will qualify for this.
I would suspect they're more likely to qualify this year than they have in the past.
I agree.
Um, and then one slide here for reference on the calendar. So again, we'll come back, um, in September, um, with a proposed preliminary levy for approval. Uh, at one of the meetings in September, as well as the final, um, twenty-three, or the five-year C I P. Um, at that point in time, we will not be able to increase our levy. Um, and then the property tax notices that are mailed in, uh, by the county in November will reflect what was proposed or adapted at the preliminary levy. Um, with that, I'll take any input that you may have in any direction council wants to provide.
Any, uh, more questions, uh, that, you know, covered a lot of ground here? Counselor Brennan? Counselor Lehman?
Yes, it's too high.
A little too high?
Yep.
And Counselor, um, Whiting?
I think you shot down all my suggestions, so, uh.
No voter.
Counselor Contreras? Uh, you know, I really think that as a, as a board of the city, I think we're growing our city. Our, our market value has been going straight up. Our tax rate has gone down, I believe, for seven straight years. Home values, which is part of, you know, your wealth, or I think that that would be a good thing. Um, I think we've worked on it. I think staff has done a good job to try to keep that levy as low as possible. I think, uh, uh, Mr. Reynolds put out some other, uh, preliminary levies that haven't been voted on yet, but from other communities and, uh, within Scott County here. And, um, you know, we look to be the lowest and, uh, it's interesting to, to see the market value of Shakopee go up, the tax rate go down, and with, we don't control the value of your homes, so. Um, but, uh, I think we do a pretty good job in general.
No, last comment is, you know, someday we're gonna be looking for that special project fund and we'll have trickled it away.
Okay. Other comments on this, uh, proposal? There's no action required. Okay, Nate, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, let's move ahead then to the city, uh, ten A, the city bill list, uh, is in front of us. Any comment questions on the city bill list?
I have a question.
Counselor Lehman?
The, uh, I can find the J and J Minneapolis TIF payment on the backside here, but I, I can't find the other two. The, the GOM companies, Met Council, grant reimbursement for the riverfront, and the Greystone Construction Community Center Space Activation Payment Number One. Where do I find them on here?
Uh, good question. I can look into it. Maybe there's a, a page missing from there. Certainly, when I reviewed them, I don't remember not seeing them on there. So let me, let me take a look at what was in Nova's agenda and if there's anything that's missing.
I mean, because it says this is expenses and you highlighted three of probably the bigger ones, I'm assuming.
Correct, and those, that might be a little less confusing depending on the description of it, because usually there's a fairly accurate description within, um, within those lines.
Yeah, I looked, I, well, see, this one here is right here, Jody. But you can't, I can't find the other two. The two forty four seventy-six.
How much, how much is it right here?
Two forty.
On page nine?
Two forty-six, there it is, okay. All right, and the other one was the least amount. So what exactly is the great?
And Greystone is four items down on page nine, ninety-five thousand three fifty-three fifteen.
And what exactly is that? Community Center Space Activation Project Payment Number One.
Yep, that's, uh, redoing the community center that, uh, oh, good Lord, we brought that probably twelve months ago.
Redoing those rooms.
Doing some of the rooms and the community center then to make that space we can then, uh, rent out for, for, uh, different events.
Okay.
Yeah, they're there.
It's taken a while to get that project moving because of, uh, uh, getting materials.
Right.
So those, the two were on page nine?
Yep.
Uh, more questions on the city bill list? More questions on the city bill list? Seeing none, we would move a hor- forward to ten B liaison administration reports. Uh, we'll go this way this, this time, Counselor Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor, but I do not have one tonight.
That's fine. Uh, Counselor Whiting?
Uh, no M V T A for August. Uh, chamber board meeting is upcoming.
Okay. Do you wanna plug a M V T A for the bus to the state fair?
That's coming up, yeah. I'll have some more information. Uh, I don't have it tonight, but, uh, they do have that bus, uh, park and ride.
Yeah?
Uh, great, uh, great deal to get to the fair. Uh, that's definitely one of our peak, uh, peak events, so I'll have some more information here for you.
And I think the city put something out, uh, today as well on.
I might have missed that, okay, good.
Counselor Lehman?
The one sixty-nine corridor coalition exec board met with our new facilitators that we hired, which was, uh, S R F. Uh, Dan is gonna be our guy and Connie, who is part of the, uh, alliance, transportation alliance also, is helping out with the more, uh, in-depth planning part of it. But we basically met just to get the, meet each other and kind of put a, put together our immediate plan, you know, for the next couple of months. Um, so that went pretty good. Scale did their major T H C gummy discussion.
How did that go?
You know, there, it was a pretty good conversation, I thought. I mean, you look at all the different sides and you ask yourself, like, like we've discussed, who really checks into what's in these ingredients and weight and all manufacturing?
Not the city.
Nobody, you know, and nobody seems to have the answers, so.
The pharmacy guy.
Yes, the pharmacy department. Uh, there was, what else did they discuss at that scale meeting?
Greater M S P.
Yeah, greater M S P. That was a, a really good presentation, I thought. Um, and then they also had, earlier they had a discussion about the getting the schools, school superintendents involved in discussions. It's probably their scheduling, I guess. They got a lot of their own meetings, so, pretty light schedule.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Brennan?
Uh, Spuck met last night. Um, we had a presentation by the Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. Um, and we discussed extending their contract at twenty sixty. That, that date is just like twenty sixty.
Add a ten year.
Are we really gonna have electricity by then?
Yeah. Um, so I, I left a, the, um, twenty twenty-one annual port on everybody's table if you wanna take a look at it. Um, and also in the mail today, I received my Shakopee Public Utilities Year in Review, um, for twenty twenty-one. And, um, it talks about the amazing work that the staff and the commission has done, um, in twenty twenty-one to grow the community and the partnerships that they've had with the s- with the city.
Is that the first year they put that out?
I, I think so.
In this type of format? I do too.
Yep.
The new look Spuck is doing well.
Yep.
Did they have a calendar in the past?
No. Um, I think, I think that's all I have tonight.
All right. Um, for my mayor report, I attended the, the block party put on by Babe's Place and Mana and Deco, uh, Saturday. Um, what a great community event. Um, people were having a great time. It was, uh, you know, kind of during the day at noon until night and, um, for the couple hours I was there, um, the owner of Babe's as well as, uh, Mana, they were busy. People were dancing in the street, um, playing bags. They had a, it was, that was a pretty cool event. It brings out the best in our community. Um, and then that's probably it for my mayor report, although I wanna put in a at the Sand Venture Friday from five to seven. If you bring a non-perishable item or a hygiene product, you can gain free admission on Friday from five to seven. And I believe the pirate treasure hunt at Sand Venture is on Sunday, August twenty-first from eleven to two. So get out there, play matey and, uh, grr gnarly for the pirate treasure hunt. Arrgh.
There you go.
So a lot of fun here at, uh, at, uh, Sand Venture, so. Counselor Whiting?
One other, uh, event I forgot to mention, uh, Thursday night, Music in the Park. Uh, if you haven't been down to Music in the Park, great event. Uh, we got a great venue down there in Huber Park. Uh, this Thursday is Sawyer's Dream.
Yeah.
Uh, pop rock, I believe, so, uh, hit that and do a little, uh, uh, come on down to the park.
All right. Thank you. Um, moving ahead then to our administration report, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things and then something that, uh, may require, maybe a little discussion. First of all, uh, as noted earlier, the E D A is now the landlord for, uh, the River City Center first floor. Uh, and Mr. Kersky was out talking to his new tenants today. Uh, decided to, as I said last time, we're gonna do a candidate workshop to try to, uh, uh, give all candidates an opportunity to learn a little bit about the s- the city and the departments and how we're run and how we budget. And, uh, I'm tentatively looking to do that Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, uh, probably at five P M. Uh, more information will come on that at a later date. And then the final thing is, is that we just, we kind of need to have a discussion. We had, uh, the soccer complex bathrooms got hit, uh, a couple of days ago. Uh, and Chief Tate, uh, Mr. Lilihog and I have talked about this. Um, you know, what, what, what do we do? Do we lock, uh, these bathrooms down for a couple of weeks? Um, you know, and I, you know, there certainly, I think that there's a lot of staff that would like to see that happen. Um, but for me, it's very difficult to, uh, close something down due to a bunch of knuckle-headed eighth graders who are running around spray painting and, and graffitiing and trying to blow up toilets. Um, because people need these facilities and that's why we have them. But I did wanna bring that up. Uh, you know, do, do we wanna think about closing these for a couple of weeks? At least maybe until school starts, school start? We're, we're getting hit and we're getting hit hard. And I think, uh, uh, I, from what Chief Tate was telling me, TikTok is kind of, this is one of those TikTok challenges. You go in and you destroy a bathroom and then you put it on TikTok. So, I don't know. Uh, Jeff, you wanna kind of?
Chief? Mayor, members of council, uh, the, there was a TikTok challenge, uh, even last year in schools, in particular, in the bathrooms. There's a reason these things happen in bathrooms. We can put all the cameras in the world up in the parks and they can have, they do have a lookout, sit outside that door. It's incredibly, uh, difficult to find somebody and catch them in the act. Uh, even if you've got two or three people that go in the span of an hour on camera in and out of there, well, that, that's not gonna tell you beyond a reasonable doubt who did it. So it's a very, very difficult, um, well, for example, nationally, about seventy percent of all property crime goes unsolved. I would venture to guess ninety-nine percent of all bathroom crimes and vandalism's go unsolved because you, we're not gonna station a cop inside. Um, we have put a tremendous amount of resources, uh, into these parks. Our people aren't just patrolling them, they're stopping people that are in the parks, shagging them out after hours. When I started here, all the parks were locked. All the restrooms were locked. We used to do that all the time.
At ten o'clock or?
Big difference? No, we have a lot more parks. We have a soccer complex that is used, uh, a lot. But I do think that that's something I guess I'd like to try to work around, you know, whether it's with the Association Public Works. Our officers can have master keys that lock them up. Some of this is happening during the day. It's incredibly, uh, frustrating. We'll see what happens when school starts, but it's, we suspect it's juveniles. We've caught some. Uh, we have others that, you know, aren't gonna talk anymore.
Are we just talking about the soccer facility or this?
We've caught some not at the soccer complexes. We have some that hopefully will, city will see some restitution years down the road.
Can we put our own TikTok challenge out there?
I'm not aware of, like, uh, yeah, right. I, if it were up to me, TikTok would go away.
I'm actually serious.
Would go away altogether and.
Put our own TikTok challenge out there saying if you, if somebody catches them and gives us evidence, we're gonna make you a hero.
Right, I, it's just gotten to a point and, you know, no disrespect to Steve, but I'm tired of hearing about, about the bathrooms.
Well, let's not let him talk to you.
Let's lock them up and.
You're suggesting lock them up at night or lock them up for a period of time as a punishment kind of thing? Is this two different things?
Just to see, let's see how it works. Um, and, and understand, I mean, we're, I've started looking at these more and more as these come on. Every time I'm in a public bathroom, there's something on the walls, um, in, in most of them. I mean, there's some inevitability that's gonna come, come with that. I understand that. This is more and Steve's staff has spent a tremendous amount of time, uh, cleaning this up, uh, the toilets that are, that have been smashed. I know our staff would have no problem instead of, you know, having officers sit out there and the amount of time that we've put out there, turn the key. And then our cameras, if they do, if, if that is displaced into different areas, then our cameras are gonna catch who's doing it. And I should mention the Crime Prevention Board did purchase, uh, more cameras.
But if there was a soccer game going on, we, we wouldn't lock it, right? You're just, at the end of the, at the end of the event, the use on the field is gone. Um, I, I would support locking them if, just to see if we can, you know, I don't know if we're gonna get, if it's just one facility or we do them all.
Well, I think, if I may, I think that, you know, we would do it except, a lot of it is where we don't have eyes.
Right.
So Lions Park is fine, uh, although we did get a, lose the lion.
Right.
You know, a couple of years ago. Uh, but, but, you know, uh, Huber Park seems to be okay. There's a lot of eyes on Huber Park.
Dog park.
Uh, but there, the dog park actually got hit.
Right.
Uh, uh, because where that bathroom is, it's over
Yeah.
back in the corner. So I, you know, we would take a look and, and see where we've been hit and then, uh, uh.
My, I would suggest if it's an event space like, uh, the soccer field, shut it down at the end of the, of the, of the games. And if it is a public, uh, where people are using the park, I would say shut it down at ten o'clock.
Well, shutting them down at ten o'clock, parks close at ten anyway, so that's, that's a no-brainer. The, the problem I have is if you're gonna shut things down after an event in the middle of the day or something, how does the average family that we represent, taking their family for a walk to a park, get there, find out that the bathroom's locked up?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting only at the event-type parks, like the soccer field or maybe Top Paw or something.
Well, people are going to these parks.
Yeah.
And, and they're there for the citizens' enjoyment. And if they get there and find out little Johnny can't use the bathroom, they're in trouble. Uh, so how do we put a schedule out saying we're just randomly, it's, it's a?
Mark a BIF there.
I mean.
Mayor, members of council, I think we start just by, our staff's working together and we're start at ten o'clock. Um, see where that leaves us and again, on weekends and, you know, we'll monitor it, but, um, well, it'll stop it, some of it maybe. At least we'll know, you know what I mean? It's not gonna be inside those, uh, there's other things that happen. Uh, people walk into those bathrooms, uh, down at Huber Park at six in the morning and somebody spent the night in there. Those types of things that we, we can curb, uh, as well. So I think it's worth a, a try for a little while here. Um, it's nothing that's never been done before in, in, in the city and we'll see where it, where it takes us. And, yeah, we'll work around events and, and the parks and so forth.
Counselor Brennan, comments on that?
Yeah, I would definitely wanna keep the parks open during, or the restrooms open during the park hours. Um, so if it's ten o'clock, like Matt, Matt said, you know, you can lock them down.
Steve?
Um, mayor and council members, um, they're, they're closed that night already.
Right.
Uh, once, once, once our cleaner comes in there, we close them. So they're, they're not open all night long.
Right.
Um, I'm pretty certain of that. We, they, our cleaners have keys and they clean them and then we open them up.
So what is it we're at, we're doing if they're already closed at night? What are, what's being asked about?
They're being tagged during the daylight.
I don't, I don't know how, I, I mean, I can understand the expense and the time, um, to resolve them, but, you know, people have kids or people have to use the bathroom and that's what the park is, is to spend time and, yeah, you know, people have to go to the bathroom. So I, I don't know what that answer is too. Um, but, you know, the, the, like, the soccer field, um, I don't know how many people are actually out there if there's nothing going on or, you know, Topa Park has a playground, um, and people use it. Um.
I think if you look at the, some of the locations where we get hit, they're a little more remote than, you know, the, the soccer field's out in the middle of, you know, and. you know, and now it's getting dark earlier. If it, you know, during the day, I, I struggle during the day on this, this issue, but even like the dog park is kind of, you know, off the beaten path, at least from a visibility aspect. But I think we gotta try, try something. I, you know, I think now we're up to, this is the fourth or fifth time this has happened that we've had?
Oh, no, it's, it's happened a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the fourth or fifth time I've brought it to your attention.
Our ability to police inside a restroom is.
Yeah.
Counsel Whitey?
I, I agree. I think if there's some opportunities, just let staff do what they think is best.
Counsel Contreras?
To me, my mind just went to thinking about punishing, how, how hard are you punishing these juveniles? I mean, forget, I mean, we're spending all our money and time. I mean, they're, I know they're juveniles, but what, I mean, can you talk a little bit of what you're doing to?
Sure. They're all getting tagged. We've trespassed them from other parks, so if they were responsible for damaging city property, they're not allowed in the park again. But understand the juvenile process, and we request restitution. It's gonna be a long time before we get paid. It's gonna be a while before they get in, and, you know, you saw your prosecution fees that are going up. Part of that is because we have judges that aren't levying fines like they used to. That's part of it as well, so.
And we offered to give them something to break for free that nobody cares about, like some rocks or something?
I, there's, again, I walk into any public restroom, most of the time you're gonna see something on, on the wall somewhere. I think it has been excessive in this community, more than we're accustomed to seeing, for sure, this summer. And it's incredibly frustrating for everybody in Public Works, our staff. You know, we.
Couple gallons of water in a busted bathroom?
I'm, I'm gonna say, but, you know, if the, if the bathroom's broken, nobody can use it anyways. So I, I don't know what the perfect solution is. But, you know, you have to protect, we have to protect our.
I'll have to double check, too, on the, on the closure thing. I don't, we have, we have a lot of people hanging around those at, at night that we have been chewing out. Now, they don't have spray paint cans or markers on them, but we've caught them on the roof doing other things, too, so.
Well, I think.
We're doing, we're doing what we can. But again, I'll go back to what I said earlier. We're very limited, and there's a reason it happens inside there.
Well, I think, I don't know, what I'm hearing from the council, I think, through consensus, three of us want to have the staff take action in some form. And, you know, maybe we can take action and then monitor it, and over the next sixty days, see if, see if it's been reduced, or if it's thorting, or, you know, something. But.
How are we gonna tell the general population that these bathrooms are closed? Don't go there.
Well, I think, I think we really should have that conversation and tell them why.
Yeah.
It's, 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 the reality is, is that, you know, and it's costing taxpayer dollars to clean this up and to fix them. And, you know, they blew up one of the toilets in Southbridge, you know, that obviously had to be replaced. I mean, and, and this costs money. It's our staff time. Jeff's people are out there policing it when, you know, it really shouldn't be something that we have officers out there looking to see if some little punk is tagging a, a bathroom stall.
We don't need bathroom police.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, we, and, and, and I, I talked with Amanda, although I didn't specifically say, but I think we need to, you know, maybe in one of our upcoming hometown messengers, have an article, show some of the photos to people about what's occurring, and just simply say, if you see something in a park, for those of you that live around the parks, and you see something, you know, let us know.
Help be our eyes and ears, right?
Put a dollar sign on it.
Videotaping. You need the evidence of them doing it.
Well, that's a good point. I mean, you know, they're videotaping everything else.
Right. It's out there.
So, well, listen, you know, thank you. I wish we had a better option. I wish we had anything on this. This has been something we've been struggling with all summer. And I don't even want to think about how much money, time, and effort has been spent on it at this point.
Counsel Contreras?
No, I was just thinking, we can put it on social media like we, when we're advertising an event, and just let everybody know. It's, this is happening, this is what we're gonna do, and.
I think, you know, to the open door policy, and then now cause and effect, and we swing the pendulum back a little bit, and.
The wrong people are getting punished.
Right.
I get that, but
That's what happens.
I don't know how to, I just don't want public expense funds getting, I get that. And is this a common occurrence? It seems to be bubbling up here, or in the last year, more than ever, right?
In the last probably four to six months.
Yeah, right.
It's probably been, and you know, Mayor, Council, few things impact the perception of crime in, in a community than graffiti.
Yeah.
Just circle back again to, you know, the, the report you got, the first six months in terms of crime in the community compared to, you know, where we're at in crime rate and so forth. Again, maybe the kiss of death right here, saying this, but this, crime is down in Shakopee. Both Part One, Part Two crimes. And think of, if we didn't have these vandalisms, we're, you know, we'd have a record low year for sure. But we're actually trending that way right now, so. It's unfortunate that perception's being impacted by, by something like this, too, but in the overall scheme of things, we're having a very, very good year in the community.
Do, do you feel a reward helps either turn people in, or, or stop it, or?
Counsel Whitey, we've put a lot of rewards out over the years, and that's usually not what triggers it. It's usually something that one of our investigators does that gets it. You'd think, you know, to a fifteen, sixteen-year-old, five hundred bucks, or a thousand bucks, would mean something. And, you know, the kids that do this are a little different, you know, than, you know, I, they'll say some four-letter words to the officer, tell them where they can take their pen and, and piece of paper. It's not like, you know, they're in fear of what their parents are gonna do either if they're caught after. It's just, it's a little different in terms of how they speak to our officers.
Chief, there was an article that came out, crime in Minnesota in general is up twenty, was it twenty-one or twenty-three percent? Are we reporting different than the rest of the state?
Nope.
So why are we the outlier?
I don't think we are the outlier overall, especially in Scott County. I think you see your Hennepin and Ramsey County in particular, where most of that violent crime is seeing an increase. A lot of communities like ours are seeing decreases. I don't think we're an anomaly necessarily for suburbs. Certain suburbs, certain suburbs, first ring suburbs are seeing, I mean, look at Brooklyn Park. They're in the news every single day. It seems like for a shooting or a stabbing. So I'd like to, you know, I'm not gonna throw my shoulder out, patting ourselves on the back on, on this. It's going down, and, you know, other cities, neighboring cities, too, they're not seeing the twenty-one percent increase.
You have them pockets that are driving it up for the totality of the state.
You have enough direction, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else on your administration report?
No, sir. That's it for me.
Item number eleven is, are any other business before this council, any other business before this council? Otherwise, item number twelve, Counsel Brennan?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, September sixth, at twenty-twenty-two.
I have a motion and second by Counsel Contreras. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned at nine fifty-eight. Thank you all.